Motor scooters, motorcycles. When you're looking at transportation and bike routes, et cetera, consider that aspect because as I see in many other countries where gas is $10 a gallon or $7 a gallon, a lot of people have resorted to the scooters. Many of them don't have a route, they're riding between cars on the left side of the road, et cetera. And I think with this situation, it's not going to improve with the price of fuel being reduced. We need to somehow consider what happens when large numbers of our population turn to the scooters. Not so much the big motorcycles, but the scooters. I see more and more of those on the highway, people commuting back and forth to work. While they can't go on the freeway, in many cases they don't have enough horsepower, they're flooding our surface streets. So when you're looking at all those other factors, I'd encourage you to consider that. So we cover all aspects of transportation. I think the best freeway we have is the 105, where you got the train down the center, then you got the carpool lane, then you got the regular lanes for traffic, even that gets congested at times.
Right.
But we've forgotten about this other mode of transportation, it's becoming more and more popular just because of the price of fuel and people need to commute back and forth to work instead of the price they're paying for gasoline using another mode of transportation where you can get 40 or 50 miles per gallon. So I just want to throw that in the equation.
Thank you.
And congratulations on the mayor appointing you. Six years you've been on commission.
Yes.
Seems like yesterday, doesn't it?
It does, it does.
And tomorrow will be another day.
Right.
So hopefully we can resolve those issues. I know Councilmember Gruel has been working tirelessly to try and help our transportation issues and Bill Rosendahl with the airport, to get that green line finding to the airport. But all those issues affect our quality of life. So as a commissioner, we put you in charge to make it better. So congratulations and welcome for another six years.
Hopefully just a couple more.
All right. Congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
So with that, let's go ahead and open the roll, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much again for a third term.
Thank you very much to all of you.
Congratulations.
Also on Wednesday, July 2nd, your city council took up item number 55, a motion by 11th District Councilmember Bill Rosendahl to support a change in U.S. federal immigration policy.
Our nation's immigration policy has many flaws. We are all aware of many of them. Families are torn apart, undocumented workers abused, people dying crossing the desert in search of a better life. But there is one horrible element of our immigration policy most Americans do not know about. It is this: The United States government keeps the doors to our borders shut to people who have HIV. HIV is the only medical condition that renders people inadmissible to the United States. The United States is one of only 12 countries that prohibit, almost without exception, HIV-positive non-citizens from entering this country. The other countries include the Sudan, Russia, Libya, Saudi Arabia, and China recently reversed its ban. This is an unjust and stupid law that criminalizes disease. It was created by the former Senator Jesse Helms, whose political career was based on creating fear and demonizing people. There is no just cause for continuing this policy. There is a chance to change this law right now. The United States Senate will consider this month HIV Non-Discrimination in Travel and Immigration Act. I ask you to join me today and give unanimous approval to this resolution, which would put the City of Los Angeles on record as supporting repeal of this ban and support of Non-Discrimination Act. And I ask for an eye vote.
Supporting that position is the only member of the Los Angeles City Council actually born in another country, Jose Wezar, representing the 14th District.
Right now, you have, we have a policy where we are dividing families. If there is a U.S.-born child here and their parents are deported, we separate those families. We believe strongly in this country and family reunification and the values of making sure that families are intact because we know when families are together, when we act as units in this country, all other things fall in place. The children get well-educated because you have parents advocating for them. We keep those kids away from our jails. But we have an immigration policy in this country that makes no sense. I know that immigration policy sometimes sparks people's nerves and we get into a great big debate, but the fact of the matter is that in no time in the history of this country have we had some policies that absolutely make no sense. And Bill, this is something that we need to illuminate and show how ridiculous this is. Some of these people who can come to this country to get the medical attention they need are being denied that accessibility. And that makes no sense at all, just like many of the other immigration laws we have today. And I know immigration issues sets off hot topics and debates, but you know, the fact of the matter is if people really sat down and looked at the rationale for some of these things, they'd all agree that we need to do something to change it. And I think this helps us move in that direction. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wezar. If there's nobody else who wishes to be heard, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl.
And that was the shortened council week because, of course, there was no council session on Friday, the 4th of July. Whenever they happen, you can listen to city council meetings as well as committee and commission meetings on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. on Sundays at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending July 4th, 2008. On behalf of Warren Hill and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
The Department of Public Works maintains and operates many facets of the City of Los Angeles on all levels, from below it, on it, and above it. Below, the city has 6,500 miles of sewers and 1,200 miles of storm drains that connect to the largest waste treatment facilities in the country. On it, 7,300 miles of streets and alleys with about 200,000 condos fixed and over 100 miles of streets resurfaced annually. From above, an urban forest of 680,000 street trees trimmed for beauty and healthy clean air, as well as maintaining the 230,000 street lights that light our 24-hour city. The Department of Public Works helped design and build 32 new libraries since 1998, 76 recreation and park projects, and a national award-winning wastewater treatment plan. The Department of Public Works striving to make the City of Los Angeles a home that future generations will cherish.
A revolution has come to broadcast television, even bigger than the change to color. On February 17th, 2009, television goes all digital. But without an upgrade, some TVs will stop working. Find out what you need to do. Call this number or visit dtvanswers.com to see how you can get free over-the-air digital TV with better picture, better sound, and more channels.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for July 11th, 2008. We're here in the John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts us live every council meeting and rebroadcast us in the evening. We also want to welcome those guests who are here in council chambers, members of the public, and special honorees here, which every Friday we point out and give awards to notable Angelenos and others who have impacted the life of our city. And we will get to our presentations shortly. I want to thank the council members who are here on time pursuant to council rules, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Wezar, Mr. Labons, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson. We are still awaiting three more members to constitute a quorum. The following members are late. If they will please make their way down, Mr. Alacon, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Hahn, and... Mr. Cardenas, thank you for joining us. Mr. Alacon, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Parks, and I believe that is all that we are expecting today. Our agendas are available in the back for anybody who would like to see what's on the agenda. Those are also made available 72 hours in advance. But we have a very special presentation from our council member from the 10th District. Friday is a day in which we bring not only a lot of great human beings in here, but some very great furry friends as well. So with that, our council member from the 10th District, Herb Wesson.
Good morning, Mr. President, and are we live? There it is. Okay, I want everybody to see these two beautiful little puppies, companion animals that I have with me today. For those of you that don't know, today is Pet Adoption Friday. And we try to find homes for our abandoned dogs in, oh, get daddy a lick, in the city of Los Angeles. Today I have two beautiful little dogs. One is a puppy. This one is Lovito, who is three months old and is a poodle mix. And colleagues, you might be familiar with this dog's name. His name is Jack. Jack is, I don't know what his last name is, but his name is Jack. And he's three years old and will not get any bigger, and he's a mixed Chihuahua mix. Now, at, people that are watching, falling in love with these dogs, don't be disappointed when, if somebody else beats you to the punch because in the City of Los Angeles, we have a 100% adoption rate. And generally what happens, we get the dogs adopted almost before I get to the podium. So in the case of our furry friend to my left, Lovito, he has been adopted and I want to present him to his new owner, who happens to be our own Sergeant Duarte. If you'd come forward and come get your, your hound of love. So we, the officer is gonna give this young man a happy home. And in the back, there's negotiations going on for Jack. So if anybody is interested in giving Jack a home, he's only three years... Oh. Come here. Okay, and this is gonna be, this is gonna be Jack's new mom. So, City of Los Angeles, our 100% adoption rate is still intact. Take that, L.A. County. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson.
And thank you. Thank you so much.
And congratulations and thank you for your good work. We next will recognize the council member from the 1st District. Give some more dog, we'll get you some more. We will recognize from the 1st Council District, or you want to go, Mr. Labange?
Yes.
You ready to go? Okay. Thought we were gonna wait for one more. But let's go ahead, Mr. Labange, and we'd like to recognize him in the 4th District for our next presentation, and then Mr. Reyes.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning. This is a great day in Los Angeles because we have someone who is very, very special. And need I say more, but to say to the sound man there, roll the tape loud, please. Jerry.
We represent the Lollipop Kid, the Lollipop Kid, the Lollipop Kid, and in the name of the Lollipop Kid, we wish to welcome you to much entertainment.
What a day, what a treat. This is Jerry Marinday in the City of Los Angeles. Please welcome the original Lollipop Kid. And what an honor it is. You know, members, we all have special, special, special days, but late last year, with the late, great Johnny Grant, our president Eric Garcetti, we were on Hollywood Boulevard where many of the members of the original Munchkins cast of the 1939 classic The Wizard of Oz were presented a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. And Jerry, there's Janice Hahn, she's the one you were asking about. And, and I said, Jerry, I would want to honor you as you live in my district, you and your wife of 33 years, which is so special, and the whole story of the picture. So I'm gonna give you a proclamation, but I'd like you to tell the council and the people of Los Angeles how special it was in 1939 to be part of that classic where you welcomed Dorothy Gale to Munchkinville. Here it is, Jerry Marinday, right here.
Thank you very much, Tom. It's a pleasure to be here and, well, I love Los Angeles. From the minute I stepped foot off the bus at Metro Oldham Air Studios, and, well, I just love it out here. Everything is run so properly, you know, much better than the other big cities out there.
All right, Jerry, Jerry for mayor, let's hear it right now.
Yeah. So I just love Los Angeles and I love the way you govern it and evidently do a good job because there are no complaints.
Well, Jerry, that was great. And there was a number of Munchkins who came, including a touring group from Europe who joined with you.
Yes.
And were part of that special thing. And I think every child, young and old, no matter what, have always loved the picture that it made. Tell us a little about working with that wonderful Judy Garland and everyone there.
Well, to begin with, they found me in Boston, Massachusetts. That's where I'm from. And they found me in Boston, Massachusetts, and, well, Parkia Car and Harbor, yeah, you know that business. So what did you want me to tell you about them?
I just want to let you know how special the picture was and how you enjoyed it. How come you got the middle role of being the real Lollipop Kid?
Well, when I was in, when I was going to high school, my sister used to go to dancing school, and my mother says, "Go to dancing school with your sister, maybe you'll learn something." So I did, and I got to like it, you know, so... And the teachers liked me and after we learned our routines and everything. So after, after a year at dancing school, why, the teachers say, "Jerry, would you mind doing an act with us? We, we do the New England Circuit every year and today we wanted, I mean, this year we want to do a different, different act. So we want you to join the act." I said, "I'd be happy to." So we did an act called Three Steps and One Half. Half.
Ah, you got it right there. Jerry Marinday, you're very special to be here and we're honored that you're here. How many times you think you've seen the movie The Wizard of Oz?
About 10,000.
10,000 times. Well, you're certainly a very special person and I'm glad, on behalf of the mayor of the City of Los Angeles, Antonio Villarosa, the whole city family, and my colleagues, to salute you right now. And let me call your wife up real quick if I could.
Oh, yes, you folks like to meet my lovely wife, Elizabeth. She's from Mobile, Alabama. How about that?
Captured me a Yankee.
What do you want to say, Elizabeth? What do you want to say, Elizabeth, right there?
I said, "He's from Boston and I'm from Mobile. I captured me a Yankee."
All right, very good. Well, this is good. Well, this is two great, dynamic couples.
Yeah.
And what's so important, too, is they are very active in their roles as those patrons of The Wizard of Oz, one of the greatest classic American pictures. So Jerry, on behalf of the City of Council, it's my honor there to hereby proclaim this Jerry Marinday not just in Los Angeles, but here in the great City of Oz. And now, as you go forth, Jerry, anytime you meet the fine uniforms of the Los Angeles Police Department, just show them this certificate and they will give you a free pass.
Wow. How we.
All right, let's hear it again from Jerry Marinday.
Well, thank you very much, Tom.
All right, and with the lollipop, you also get a very special...
Of course.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Elizabeth Labange.
All right. Roll that tape again, just for an exit. There we go. Make it happen. Call the Wizard if you can. Let's make it happen. Here we go.
Who's that? Me?
That's all right, I got you. Let me get you down.
Thank you, folks. You've been great.
Elizabeth, thank you very much.
It's our pleasure. I don't have a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
All right, we'll get that. All righty.
Hello, thank you very much. Let's give a big round of applause again to Jerry Marinday and thank you very much, Mr. Labange. We'll next recognize from the 1st Council District, Councilmember Ed Reyes for another very special presentation.
Step, yeah, thank you. Janice, you want to pitch in? Do you want to pitch in?
Good morning.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues. It is my pleasure to be standing here with you today with a number of recognizable faces for many of us. They are the members of the KNEX Univision family. With me is General Manager Maelia Massin, who I believe is one of our first times here at City Hall. As a general manager, so welcome, Maelia. We have with us Luis De La Parra, the Director of Marketing Promotions at Univision, and of course, the familiar morning news anchors of Primera Edición, Gabriela Cecié, Francisco Pinto, and Minister Rolando, he closes with us. Okay, he's on his way. I want to welcome you all to City Hall. Let's give them a round of applause, folks. You know, tomorrow at the Rio de los Angeles State Park Taylor Yard, we have an opening event where a partnership will be made evident for many young people, many family members because with Univision, we're gonna have Copa Univision. It'll be a day-long soccer tournament. It'll be a day-long soccer tournament, beginning tomorrow. It will include 64 teams from throughout the region and will attract more than 3,000 people. But it's not only about soccer, because it includes a family festival with food, entertainment, and community information. So, when we look at soccer, you can see it's becoming part of the American fabric. More and more youngsters are involved, more families, it's a great way to create diversion and a great way to address the needs of our families, especially in the areas where it's park poor. So, we wanna celebrate this connection between Univision family, the city family, and the family members of our community. This connection will bring about many benefits, and I'm hoping it'll be the type of tournament that will strengthen the ties with our private sector, with the city, as well as the families who truly need relief from the very congested and park poor areas that define a good number of our districts in the city. So, I'd like to introduce to you Maella Massin, please. Good morning.
Thank you, thank you, um, thank you, and thank you so much for having us here. Univision is very proud to be putting on this tournament, Copa Univision, this is the first time we're launching it, uh, it's, it's tomorrow, we welcome all of you to come by and, uh, and visit us, but the, the, the message that we wanted to set out, send out to our viewers and to our community, is that, uh, uh, getting the children together in a healthy way, having them, uh, participate in sports is, is the way to keep children focused. We are, one of our biggest platforms at Univision is education, and we believe that if we keep children, uh, focused on sports and in activities in the schools, and we get the families together like we will tomorrow, because it is a family event, we can help the education with the Hispanic community, which we know is, is, is at risk in, in many communities. So, we, we wanna thank, uh, the city of Los Angeles Parks and Rec, our partners in this is Chivas, so we wanna thank Antonio Guey and, uh, Sean Hunter and all our great friends at Chivas USA, and obviously, thanks to all of you for having us here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to invite anyone else, like to come on?
Well, um, thank you. On behalf of our team and the morning show, um, and on behalf of KMEX, really thank you, because this, this recognition actually extends to all of our viewers, and that, uh, council member Ed Reyes is gently enough to bring us here and, and give us this proclamation means that you are also recognizing our people, our viewers, and we are a big component of this community, so thank you very much.
We've got, uh, two council members who'd like to add their good wishes, Mr. Cardenas first and then Mr. Wiza.
I just wanna take this opportunity to thank Univision for being a big part of what makes this country great, and, and that is the freedom of speech and the news that you provide and the information that you provide for all of the United States, even though you do it in Spanish, sometimes you have breaking stories, you have stories that no one else is covering, and it's important for us to understand that we do have freedom of speech in this country, and it's very important that people get to the truth, whether it's truth that we might not be happy about, or might not be proud about, or what have you, but the truth must prevail, and Univision is a big, big part of that, uh, you're one of the biggest networks in this entire country, and you're actually, it's my understanding, you're actually reaching out to, in some cases, to more listeners, like here in Los Angeles, than any other station in any language, correct? So, I just wanted to thank you very much for being a part of that, for continuing to be strong and setting the standard, and once again, I think it's important that people understand, regardless of what language you speak in this country, freedom of speech does reign, and it's important that organizations like you are successful, so thank you very much.
Mr. Wiza.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I wanna also, uh, thank Univision for the great work you're doing in the community and being involved in this program, and particularly recognizing the importance of education, and, uh, I'd like to say that I think the most important public policy issue that we face in this country is educating our young people, because we need to be competitive in the future, we need to prepare our workforce, but also importantly is, we have a moral obligation to support our young people in public education, which for many of them, it's their only ticket out of poverty, and here in Los Angeles, we have over 73% of our students Latino in LAUSD, 43% of them are English language learners, so you see the importance of someone like Univision connecting with these children's parents, who sometimes their only means of information is visually, through the television, through the news, the people, parents who watch your television show, so thank you for the work you're doing, you're in touch with our community, and doing these type, types of programs is really going beyond the call of duty of what you're doing, so thank you so much, and we certainly, as a city, look forward to working with you as we, uh, not only, uh, uh, improve our programs for our young people, but also partner with organizations like Univision, 'cause we, the government can't do it alone, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and we have one more member, or who'd like to say a few words, Ms. Grul? Ms. Grul?
Thank you very much, and I wanted to add my, uh, welcome, uh, here to Los Angeles and also echo, uh, the comments that have been made about the importance of Univision here in Los Angeles, and this, not only the stories that are, are covered, um, the people you represent, um, uh, your reporters have been great and have been, um, understanding with my Spanish, um, and, uh, have been very helpful, but it is, uh, it's a great part of this city, um, and, uh, people get a lot of their information from Spanish language TV and your presence, not only in the news, but also from the community aspect, and we had a chance just to talk about some of the things you're doing as on the California Commission on the Status of Women and the importance of that, and seeing women there, um, we, we talk about, uh, girl power here in the city council, there's three of us, uh, Ms. Hahn and, uh, Ms. Peria and myself, um, but the importance of supporting women, and so I just wanna congratulate you, uh, serving as a role model for so many young women, um, in particular here in California, we look forward to working with you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for doing the introduction, not only today, but earlier, uh, having the chance to meet. Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Rosenoff, as well.
Yes, just one quick comment, I, I had the pleasure of doing a lot of television over the years, you know? Inform people, connect them, help them understand the issues of the day, and I gotta tell you, you guys do that all the time. Uh, it would be great if you could, uh, flip a channel and get it on a multicast where you could speak English for us, English types who can't speak it, 'cause we would learn more, uh, about the current events and the news going on, on your channel than we do on, on the other ones, so I just wanna thank you for empowering and connecting people. When I saw the latest statistics, how people are registering and becoming part of the process, I mean, we have more people registering and becoming American citizens in the last year from this megalopolis than we've had in any year in our history, and in part, that's due to you all and how you inform and educate and connect people to the issues in this democracy. So, hats off, hands up, thank you so much for what you all do, appreciate it.
And, uh, one last entrance as well, Mr. Alarcon.
I feel compelled to say something, because so many people in my district are fans of Univision and, and, uh, obviously, Spanish speakers who are watching your TV, uh, I recall, when I was a little boy, watching my grandfather watch the bullfights and, and some pretty bad television, uh, on channel, on the, on Univision and other Spanish, the other Spanish station, and, um, and I have to tell you that Univision, if you've ever been to their studio, it is one of the nicest, I think it is the most beautiful, the nicest, most high-tech studio in Los Angeles, and that, that I think is saying a lot, um, but I think the caliber of the TV, the quality of the TV is competitive with, with, uh, any English language station, there's no question about it, so I wanna not only commend you on, on, on your, your, uh, providing Spanish language TV to a community that greatly needs that, uh, but for investing in, in that community, in that, uh, information and the, the, uh, technology of today's world, so that they can, uh, have a better, uh, opportunity to understand what is going on in today's world. Your, as Tony was saying, your news programming, uh, is a little bit edgier than in English, but it is telling the truth, uh, in, from the perspective of wherever the news is coming from. It's, it's, it's not as tapered down as, as, uh, some of the other news stations, and so if you really wanna get an accurate, uh, news story, you're more likely to see it on a Spanish, uh, news program, particularly Univision, so congratulations, keep up the good work, I hope we continue to invest in the caliber of, of the quality of the TV that is, uh, provided to the community, they've sure, certainly shown that the demand is there and it's going to continue to be.
And, uh, let me just thank you, Mr. Reyes, uh, the work that you've done to make Taylor Yard an incredible civic treasure is unparalleled, I go there quite often, I see so many families out there, I know it's been a lifelong dream of yours to make that a civic treasure, it's only fitting that another civic treasure, Univision, is part of, uh, this torneo this, this, uh, weekend, and thank you on behalf of a lot of the kids in my district who use that, who will be a part of that, so congratulations, felicidades to, to all of you, and back to you.
Thank you, Council President, thank you for those kind words. So Maella, Gabriela, Francisco, Luis, for being the lifeline for many members of our community, we wanna provide this certificate of recognition for your Copa Univision 2008, for continued support, our local youth, and Angelinos everywhere through your day-long soccer tournament at Rio de los Angeles State Park in the city of Los Angeles, felicidades.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, our last presentation is from the councilwoman from the 15th district, Councilwoman Janice Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, we're here today to recognize the good work of the LAPD Harbor Teen Community Police Advisory Board. Uh, this was inspired by Chief Bratton's community policing philosophy of partnership, prevention, problem solving, and Harbor area senior lead officer Joe Buscaino established the Harbor Teen CPAB in January of 2006. In fact, Joe firm, formed the first teen CPAB in the history of the Los Angeles Police Department. Meeting on a monthly basis at the Boys and Girls Club of the Los Angeles Harbor, uh, the Harbor Teen CPAB consists of enthusiastic, optimistic, and progressive students from Banning High School, San Pedro High School, Narbon High School, Mary of, Mary Star of the Sea High School, and Gardena High School. These teens are brought into the problem-solving process with the LAPD to find solutions to the problems facing today's youth and to reduce crime. Some of the programs teen CPAB members have worked on include mentoring truancy violators on the importance of staying in school and attaining a solid education, producing live skits that show the negative effects of graffiti hat, that has on our communities, and creating anti-graffiti and curfew awareness public service announcements. In fact, we're going to have, uh, the world premiere of their curfew awareness public service announcement here, uh, in a few minutes. They've also coordinated two successful teen police conferences that address issues such as gang prevention, teen drinking and driving, graffiti, violence prevention, and bullying. I truly believe that it's programs like this that will, um, reduce teen violence and give our kids the tools that they need to stay out of gangs in the first place. I'm pleased to share with everybody that, that this program has not only contributed to 11% reduction in teen violence since it started, it is being replicated all over the city and was highlighted for their best practices at last year's citywide CPAB summit. This program was even highlighted at the National Youth Gang Symposium in Atlanta, Georgia, through the Boys and Girls Club of America. Through their motto, "Doing the hard right instead of the easy wrong," I look forward to seeing their good work improving our community and assisting our young people to achieve their goals in life. Let's now watch their PSA entitled, "Curfew." Roll it.
At Harbor Division, for probably the last three or four years, and we've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
5859, can you have 5061 Street?
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we, uh, have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the, uh, the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
They have to be with a, a parent or guardian at something like an event such as girl beating.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they, uh, they need to stay, stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
You know, that, that was an excellent public service announcement, and I loved it, because this is young people speaking to young people, uh, and sometimes we don't even use the same language when we're trying to reach out to our young people, this was, uh, you speaking, uh, to other young people, and I think that's what makes it powerful. Uh, so now I would like to, uh, present a certificate of recognition, uh, to LAPD's Harbor Teen Community Police Advisory Board in recognition of your leadership, through your hard work, you have helped address community issues by taking action and making a difference in your community, keep up the great work. I would like to present this to, uh, Harbor Division commanding officer Billy Hayes, um, and Eslo, our senior lead officer Joe Buscaino, we also have Sergeant Catherine Plous here today, I wanna thank you and, and the teens as well, and then I'll let you say some things, but I wanna present this.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
If you wanna say a few words, and then I'll have Joe say a few words.
Just wanna thank the councilwoman for recognizing the hard work that Sergeant Officer Buscaino and Sergeant Plous have done, and more importantly, the roles they have done in developing the youth that you see behind you, and hopefully the leaders of this community in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our great senior lead officer, Joe Buscaino.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, for, and your staff, for your continued support of the Teen Police Advisory Board. Um, these teens behind me and, and many others in the organization have made that commitment, the unpopular choice to help police, to help the police department in dealing with the complex issues they're dealing today, including the gang issue, graffiti, curfew, and they are just phenomenal, and we're so proud of them. In fact, um, I'd like to in, in, introduce Isaiah Alexander, who's been the chair of this organization, and before I say, I wanna, um, again, thank, uh, Captain Hayes and Sergeant Plous for continuing to bless this concept and continuing to move forward, so Isaiah, please, a couple, give him about a minute.
Careful. How you guys doing?
We're good.
Um, Teen CPAB is, is, is a wonderful program. First of all, it's not only giving me a different outlook on the police officers in my community, but it's also giving me faith in the police officers in this community, because the media always produces the negatives, make you get the stereotype that all police officers are bad, and if you, if you hang out with the teens in our, in our town, they run away from the police for no apparent reason, just because they think that they're criminals and say hi. And this program has given these kids confidence that when they come around a police officer, they can just be normal, they can, they can relax, they can let their shoes off and just hang out with the police officers and talk to them like people, 'cause we, the, the teens, we don't look at the police officers like people because of what we hear. And with me being a part of this program, it's given me a better outlook and more faith, and it's made this community work a lot more efficiently and effectively, this collaborative effort has been the greatest, and I just think that this gift that we have and having Teen CPAB must be expanded so everybody else can share the same quality that we have in our town, and that's that the teens understand the police and the police understand the teens, and it's making everything a lot safer. and it's making everything a lot safer, it's making our whole town a lot safer. And I appreciate you guys acknowledging us and recognizing our good efforts. We're going to continue to work hard, and positivity is the only thing we want to produce.
And Anthony. Anthony Luna. And also like to bring up, I know we're short on time, Anthony Luna, who's been our event chair, who's oversaw the city's first two teen police conferences in the Harbor area, and he oversaw the successes of our teen police conferences. Anthony?
How yous doing? Just want to thank everybody for thanking us for what we've been doing. I just want to say that through the program and through the organization and through the LAPD, I'm able to relate to the police officers before, like before I wasn't able to. I'm able to sit down and have a conversation with Sergeant Plows and Senior Officer Joe Buscaino, and it's nothing, like it's a friend of mine. Before the program, I was unable to do that. I grew up in a family where relating with police officers wasn't really there. And I want to thank the program and just say how much of a blessing it is to work with these police officers. And they really changed my life and really pushed me into my dreams of being in politics and working with Boys and Girls Clubs across the nation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, what a great example of real community-based policing and working with the next generation to grow up a generation of young people who will have a better relationship with LAPD, and we can all work together to reduce crime in Los Angeles. Thank you. This is a model that should be duplicated everywhere. And I've got certificates for all the teens in the back. You'll follow me.
And one dog as well.
And a dog.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. That'll close our special presentations for Friday. If we can please call the roll.
Alecon, Cardenas, Grill, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and appall, Mr. President.
Okay, if we can please go through the first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weston moves, and Ms. Hahn seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Ms. Grill moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds without objection. Those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item number five to July 23rd.
Okay, is there any objection, folks, to continuing item five until the 23rd? If not, so ordered. Next items, please.
Items one through five, with the exception of five are items noticed for public hearings.
Okay. We don't have any cards on those, why don't we keep the public hearing open and continue those till August 1st without objection. Next items, please.
Next are items six through eight, and those are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Yes, seven for Ms. Grill. Other specials, six through eight, colleagues. We call the two others then and take those up. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Six and eight are approved. If we can hold the ordinances on the desk, that's nine through 14, and I'm sure we have some cards as well. And that leaves us 15 through 18. They're before us.
Mr. President, there are cards on 16 and 17.
Okay. We'll open and close the public hearings on 15 and 18. Any members wish to call either 15 or 18 special? If not, let's go ahead and please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Next is item number 19 on the continuation agenda, and that is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, I'll call that special, please. And item 20.
Item 20 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and Mr. President, there is a card on this item.
Okay. Does anybody know which microphone is doing that? We'll talk to our sound man to try to find out. Anybody wishing to call that special, number 20? We do, oh, sorry, we have cards, you said? We'll call that special for cards from the public. Next, if we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alecon, Cardenas, Grill, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and appall, Mr. President.
We have items 20 through 23. Let's call those special for a combination of cards and also as ordinances. We'll hold those. 24 is also with us. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on 24, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. If we can continue the items 21 through 23 back into the regular meeting and adjourn the special meeting. That'll take us to public comment. This is now time for general public comment. Public comment, there's a car, sorry, a clock there at the podium to help folks guide their time, two minutes per speaker, and this is for items that are not on the agenda today but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the City Council. Our first speaker is going to be Zuma Dogg, and after that will be Jeremy Roth Kuscheh.
Yes, yes, y'all. First of all, good morning, and I must say good morning to everybody on TV watching as I've been out and about. You know, I live in my van, basically, so I basically live wherever I run out of gas, and the response from the people has been overwhelming. I'd like to say hello to everybody, and if you haven't met me and you're watching, I appreciate it, and there's enough people out there that are representing for you. Speaking of representation, I'd like to represent for medical marijuana. Okay, you can see my special thing here. Richard Eastman will be having a medical marijuana march at the Democratic National Convention when Barack Obama's nominated, and he might be contacting council members for support. I hope you give it to him. And also, the medical marijuana people would like LAPD to have training because we have new laws regarding Prop 215, and a lot of time, you know, I just assume that there's big training sessions at Staples Center with all 10,000 LAPD and all the new laws are explained. Well, that's not the case, so we need some training. That's what they would like. Last week, the LA Times picked up on Zuma Dogg's nonprofit abuse scandal that I've been talking about. I've been saying it's the biggest drain on the coffers and the biggest fraud, waste, abuse, and racketeering. Thank you, LA Times, Sunday, front page coverage. Well, last week, you heard me say some things about Councilmember Jan Perry, and I was told by the city attorney that it was libelous and to be careful. Well, thank you, LA Weekly, for picking up on Zuma Dogg's story about the CRA. You've heard me talk hair endlessly about the CRA and about Jan Perry and about corruption and about things that I do consider corruption and racketeering. And thank you, LA Weekly, for picking up on my story from last year about the CRA meeting with $8 million. It's there. And also, the biggest thing in the city now on American Top 40, I'm Casey Kasem. We're up to the number one problem the city will be facing for the next five and 10 years, the dumbass county turned down $340 million in money for the gold line. So now they'll be asking you to pay for it. Meanwhile, we're stuck with density with no gold line, you stupid a-holes.
Please watch your language, Mr. Dogg.
I would suggest that he be given a warning.
Yes, consider that a warning, Mr. Dogg. Jeremy Roth Kuscheh. Good morning, good to see you.
Good morning, good to see you too. I was here about two weeks and addressed this council about some of the more disturbing questions involved in creating a relationship with Israeli consultants at LAX, especially regarding the deep history of Israeli intelligence and many intelligence networks, including our own, in doing provocations called false flag terrorism. So I wish I could come here and talk about bunnies and clouds, and actually, more to my passion, creating a vibrant city that is sustainable with communities that work. But meanwhile, facts are stubborn things, like John Adams told us. And James Madison warned us that if tyranny and oppression were to come to this land, it will be in the guise of fighting a foreign enemy. And that is the way that tyranny and oppression are approaching us today. And so I am here to address this council on behalf of a citizens group called We Are Change LA, which represents the millions of Americans and people around the world who know that the story that we are fed around 9/11 is not true. And in fact, there are many facts that point to internal complicity in the attacks of 9/11, including, but not limited to, war games and terrorist drills that were being conducted on that morning that mimicked what happened that day when we have Condoleezza Rice and George Bush saying no one could have imagined it. The National Reconnaissance Office was drilling a plane running into their building. The Joint Chiefs of Staff were doing live hijack drills. It includes the apparent controlled demolitions in Manhattan on 9/11. And I would appreciate that you all would have listened to me, and I appreciate those of you that are, because we're talking about the fundamentals of our constitution, our republic, which has to do under Article 3, Section 3 of the Constitution with treason. And I urge you all to seriously take your oath. Seriously, thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Our next speaker is Katie Kurtzman. After that is Bruno.
Good morning, my name is Katie Kurtzman. I'm also a member of We Are Change. I was born in Washington DC in Georgetown. I've lived in Los Angeles since I was seven. I'm not in law enforcement, but my grandfather was a career FBI man of 35 years, and my father also put in time working for the FBI in what would be now referred to as a think tank. I'm very concerned about the potential position of our local law enforcement that may find themselves as a result of Presidential Directive 51 essentially nullifying Posse Comitatus. My concern primarily is around the fact that Blackwater is building a mercenary army training academy facility in San Diego, and that the city of San Diego lost the effort to stop Blackwater in a Supreme Court ruling June 17. Blackwater mercenary soldiers take no oath to protect and defend the Constitution. In fact, warnings about the dangers of mercenary armies appear in the Declaration of Independence. Blackwater wants to transform an 800-acre chicken ranch in San Diego into the state-of-art training camp for law enforcement. Why is a private company with no allegiance to the Constitution training local law enforcement?
Mr. President, I don't believe that's within the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles.
I'm getting to that.
If we can just remind, as much as we can talk about things that are directly under jurisdiction.
I'm getting to that, sorry. Additionally, should Presidential Directive 51 go into effect, local law enforcement, including the Sheriff's Department, the LAPD, and the CHP would have no way to protect themselves or their community from Blackwater. In 2006, Blackwater drew their weapons on US soldiers after a car accident in which a Humvee full of Blackwater operatives crashed into a US Army Humvee in the streets of Baghdad in the Green Zone. They forced them onto the ground at gunpoint, our soldiers. Blackwater will be... Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bruno. After that is Armando Herman.
Hi, my name is Bruno Rual, I'm with We Are Change LA. Blackwater is a local issue because they can come into the city, and who's going to stop them? Are you? Privatization is moving fast swiftly under the pretense of maximizing profit. The truth is privatization is a tool of fascism with the goal of maximizing control, control over us, the people, and our precious freedoms. Privatization laughingly steps on the face of our constitution, on the face of the Declaration of Independence. Private malls here in LA are attempting to claim control over the rights of the public. The Hollywood and Highland Mall says in its rules and regulations that members of the public are not allowed to speak to anybody else they do not know. Corporate investment firms are approaching California state politicians with advice to privatize our highway and transportation infrastructure, and it's happening. Senator Dianne Feinstein is helping to gut the United States Forest Service here in California in order to force it into privatization of our firefighters. Private mercenary armies such as Blackwater are quickly positioning themselves in California to exercise violent control over our people in Los Angeles and our local police forces. Halliburton is building hundreds of camps to concentrate potentially millions of people under slave labor control like in fascist Nazi Germany. Many of these camps are being constructed around Los Angeles now. The private media companies are so tightly controlled, truth has vanished from reporting. None of us can trust a single word, a single report we see or hear in the mainstream media. We're being lied to all the time. The Federal Reserve or private corporations seems intent on bankrupting this great nation and forcing us to relinquish our sovereignty into a private corporation called the North American Union. In the near future, we will all live, drive, walk, and breathe strictly on someone else's private property and beg and plead for mercy each time we encounter mercenary soldiers. The private publishers of textbooks will rewrite history so that generations who follow will never know the Bill of Rights even existed. This year, today, now is the moment to decide the path to take into the future. For every choice you make from here on out, please direct us away from privatization and towards freedom. Nobody's exempt from what the future brings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Armando Herman?
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Armando Herman. I try to represent any and all who are advocates of the city of Los Angeles, but today I come to criticize the mayor based on this budget summary that we all have. If any of you can get ahold of this summary, you will see the discrepancies and the hilarious projected fundings that are going wherever. But my point is this, do you understand the budget, the city's expenditures and revenues? Because the city of Los Angeles continues to rely on the reserve funds. That's the savings for the taxpayers, regular constituents, citizens of Los Angeles. The city continues to heavily rely on these reserve funds to pay its city bills. When will the city stop using these funds and rely on the taxpayers' dollars and budget that? Why not make it work for the people who are the working-class people, the people that we see today struggling on the streets without jobs? Mayor Verigosa. Also, will such reserves sustain this economy? The economic activity has not only entered a slowdown, but is taking a dramatic plunge. Affordable housing is no question, but there is no such thing as affordable housing in Los Angeles. Securing our neighborhoods? There is nothing secured about our neighborhoods. We still have gang violence and gang problems. Increasing and restore quality jobs? Where are they? Because I don't find not one able to place my children or the children of many of these families here today, and those of you in the media and those of you at home, to give your kids a decent job and out of high school. Impossible. Alleviate poverty. Today, we see a high volume of people on the streets living in poverty, from grandparents to children, homelessness. And yet to mention, the increased city services? Where is increased city services when our streets are full of blight and the areas where we live continue to have city blight? Thank you.
Patrice Goffney. And then after that is Arnold Sacks. Morning.
Mr. Garcetti, members of the City Council, good morning. My name is Paces Goffney. I represent EconOpportunities. EconOpportunities is an economic program helping ex-cons.
How do you pronounce it? I just want to make sure I get it right next time.
Paces Goffney.
Paces, thank you.
Yes. Last time I was here, I spoke with you guys about some contracts, and I was told by Mr. Garcetti that 45% of the contracts that were supposed to go to helping the at-risk community were given to a PV jobs. We did a research on PV jobs, and PV jobs has misused those contracts, and they're having waivers signed ordinary to hire outside of these people who are from the communities. You guys already have taken money in the past for the Playa Vista project. There's many people out here who are not happy with the outcome of PV jobs. They got funded for taking people in from ex-cons to regular people in the community, and they're not giving those people work at all. I've contacted most of the people at City Council, trying to get you guys to follow up and try to help us get the contracts, at least 10% of the contracting in the city, so we could actually do the job intended rather than having PV jobs, getting these contracts and misusing them and taking the money in funds that are sent out for the community. But I don't get any response. I talked to clerk members at some of your people's offices, and they had turned around and asked me, "Who am I with?" And I'd just like to state for the record that, you know, me and my organization, EconOpportunities, we're with the people of Los Angeles, and we want to be heard. I've also started a new group called the Kings of Cobras, since the Black Reunited American, and we're not going to sit around and let you people just do what you want to do with the contracts anymore. And Mr. Garcetti, your friend right now that you've just became the president of the NAACP, I don't think he'd appreciate knowing that you're actually a racist. Last time I was here, I stated you don't have any black people inside of your office. How can you run around people who run the NAACP and you don't have any black people in your office, but you're in the magazine smiling?
Sir, not only is that untrue, and you can look and find out, Sarah, last time you said that, that's also true, and I would ask you, warn you, please not to say anything that's libelous or slanderous. We have not only African-American members and Latino members and Asian-American members...
I'm talking about your officer.
In my office.
So you must have hired him last year.
Your time is now up. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker.
Good day.
After that is Michael Carrion.
Excuse me, Mr. President, could you please restart my time? Excuse me? I'm down to a minute forty-eight. you gave regarding the fiasco that occurred on Wednesday's meeting and the items that were listed for public comment, and then you did not allow the public to speak on. Although, I must say, there's a little loophole in your explanation. Unfortunately, it wasn't the city attorney's ruling that canceled our opportunity to speak in public comment. It was the attorney that testified in front of you regarding the snafu with the voting for the San Pedro Business Improvement District. Her comment was that if you allow the public to comment, then you must allow the voting process to be reopened. And based on that information, the councilwoman decided not to go along with public comment. But it wasn't her decision. It was listed on the agenda as items for public comment, open for public agenda, and you disallowed it in violation of the Brown Act. And the city attorney, the city council attorney, was not aware that by reopening the item for public comment or allowing public comment to occur, that the vote would have had to reopen also. So you would have passed the legislation, and you would have passed it illegally. And where does that leave us? It's a lollipop day. Stop playing the public for suckers. We pay attention, you'll be surprised. Open and transparent? How about for duty and humanity? You remember the Three Stooges? Open and transparent, duty and humanity. Thank you for your time, your answers, and your attention. I do have more time.
If you'd like to speak a few more seconds.
I don't know. I've lost my, I've closed my argument.
Okay. Michael Carrion? Thank you, sir, is our next speaker. After that is Candido Maris.
My name is Michael Carrion, and I'm here once again to ask whoever's on Transportation Department, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Labange, Rosenthal, Alacan, and Parks, this is a parking ticket, okay? Apparently, you seem to think that parking tickets are here for cleaning up the city, yet there's a double standard on your parking tickets. I had an elderly lady fall down crossing the street in Mr. Reyes's district. I pulled over and parked in the loading zone to help this lady. You think you're a city employee? A traffic meter mate was going to help her? No, she drove right around her, parked in front of me. While I was helping the lady get up off the floor, I got a parking citation. That's what I get for being a good citizen. But apparently, Ms. Gruel is too busy talking to understand what it is I'm talking about.
Sir, if you could please direct your comment to the councils whole, thank you.
I'm talking to Ms. Gruel. She's on this committee, isn't she not?
Sir, I'd please ask you to just ask us-
I'm talking to the committee about Ms. Gruel's actions.
Okay? Keep it that way then, please.
I'm talking to you about her actions. So please don't interrupt me again. Okay? Now-
Sir, I would warn you, please. When we're stating the rules, we will give you your time back, but we have to state what those rules are. If we interrupt you to do that, that's because it's in violation of those rules.
What's in violation?
And please abide by those. We have a code of conduct right there in front of you. Please address the councils whole.
And I was not abiding by it. I was addressing you to their actions.
You're addressing Ms. Gruel directly, so please-
You were not, sir.
You're addressing Ms. Gruel directly.
You're entitled to your opinions. They may be wrong, but you're entitled to them. Okay? So where was I? The city has a policy of citing people, but it shows me the arrogance of some of your employees who don't give a rat's ass about anybody else except themselves. All you guys think about is money, money, money. Let's go back to the money issue. You talk about gang intervention, gang programs, and everything else. Problem you have is that most of the money goes to administration. Most of the money goes to administration, doesn't go to anything. I brought these parking issues to you before. Mr. Labange made a comment that the police can break the law. Well, I got a letter stating they can't.
Thank you. I would ask all folks that are coming from the public, we're very respectful, and we make sure that we have public comment here. The comments that we have here in the code of conduct does ask folks, please do not use loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language. There are ways of expressing your opinion about employees of the city, and we cannot, and we, of course, do want to protect that speech, but when it gets abusive, and we've had in the past week people being called asses, people being called other things, please try to communicate your ideas to us. We will respectfully listen to them, but that is a warning to make sure that folks do not do that in an abusive way. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, I just-
Hold on, sir, you've got your time.
Mr. President, may I address you? I see a representative from the Department of Transportation. If this gentleman likes to step to the ropes, we'll tell him the procedure if he felt he was unjustly treated by the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. And for all speakers, and for all speakers, we do have not only representatives from the departments, but a great thing to avail yourself of, after we had comments from members of the public that wanted to know which department to go to, we have a dedicated employee from the city clerk's office who is there to answer your questions here in council, to point you to the right departments, to make sure you get the answers that you need, and hopefully that'll help you out. Mr. Maris.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. I want to go on a positive note. I've been ill, and I've been out, and I want to stay positive. I want to thank Mr. Verigosa, Mayor Verigosa, the council, and you, Mr. President, for the summer jobs that you provided. I was in North Hollywood at North Hollywood High yesterday, and there was a family of three, and they were working, and one was working in the office, the other two were working in the library. And they were working, and I asked them what they were going to do with their money, and you know what they said? They were going to give it to their mother so she could pay gas, so that she could have the money to take them to school. So I want to thank you for those jobs. Today, as I was leaving to come here, the LA Conservation Corps had almost thirty kids that were cleaning up in Porter Ranch. Can you imagine that? These were kids that were from other areas, coming up there, and they were enjoying ET Park, and they were working hard, and they were doing some great things. And the one kid said, "If my father could only have a job, can you imagine how wonderful life would be?" So I told them about the Department of Water and Power, and the 1,000 jobs that are being offered there, and it's up to each and every one of you council members, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weston, Mr. Parks, to let your constituents know that those jobs are out there for them. Last week, we were at DWP meeting over at the constituent center in Mr. Parks's district, and there were people that were there that are hungry for those jobs. So please, let's make sure that those jobs go to them. I also would like to talk about the travel. A lot of people say that the mayor's here and there, but you know where those fundings come for those jobs? They come from you going out and meeting with the federal government. We have lost so many dollars in the last few years. I'm a member of the Citizens Union of Participation. We've lost maybe fifty, sixty million dollars in the last year to support this war. We need to get those fundings back. And lastly, Mr. President, I'd like to thank Mr. Pastore, Mr. Nahai over at DWP, because they're making the changes that need to be made. I was against the rate increase, but you know what? The discounts that we brought before this council back in 2004 were at 54%. Today, they've gotten them up to 95%. That is money that's being earned by the city of Los Angeles. And lastly, if I might, the procurement process, that a DWP worker came here, Sandra Miranda, who pointed that out to you, they are now going to straighten that out.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maris.
And thank you very much for the city of working.
Appreciate your comments today. Our next speaker is Chris Condon. After that will be Matt Dowd. Very good morning.
Good morning, sir. Buenos dias, ni hao, and happy lollipop day. I am rising to speak about something that several other earlier speakers have commented upon, and that is the very serious security threat facing Los Angeles at this time. The nation is entering its most dangerous phase in our entire history between now and the next election. We have a gang of people who have taken over this country, who are not going to leave or give up power peacefully because of the magnitude of the crimes they have committed. I was recently the host of a conference in Sydney, Australia, called 9/11 and the American Empire, and I can tell you quite clearly that in the rest of the world, and in the intelligence agencies of the rest of the world, they understand clearly that the September 11th attack came from within our own country, and that Los Angeles, among other cities, we don't know exactly where, is the prime target for another terrorist attack sometime within the next six months. And while we may blame it on Iran as a pretext for war, some other Arab patsies, or some mysteriously protected Hispanic street gang, and take note, please, the attacks will in fact be coming from within the very security agencies entrusted to protect us. Now, in terms of actually protecting Los Angeles, I know how difficult this is for you, because you can't really turn and bite the dog that feeds you, but I am raising this issue so that you're all very, very conscious of the danger that faces us in the next six months, what I call the most dangerous phase in American history since the founding of the republic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd.
Thank you so much, Channel 35. I've got to give my eighty-four minutes a week. We worked it out. That's what it is now. Channel 35, Matt Dowd, gets eighty-four, so does Zuma Dog. So I want to start to use some of that in a worthwhile fashion. A lot of people come into me at Venice Beach, and they're not happy, but Michael Hunt and I, we're okay now. But a lot of people, a lot of other people are displaced. They're all coming to me now, they want me to do things, but first of all, I want to announce I play guitar, and I sell my CDs, I'm getting a lot of donations at the beach. So I've sponsored my first child in Africa now. I'm now an advocate for World Vision, and I want to ask people to reach out. It's only a dollar a day. You can sponsor a child, change a whole community, and it's actually the cheapest way you can do it. So I've got a little three-year-old girl now in Senegal, and that's thanks to Venice Beach. I want to thank all the people who come out there now and support me. Yeah, I get a lot of people, they want me to sign CDs, and it's all thanks to Channel 35, Los Angeles City Council. Thanks for messing with me in the first place. Now, we're being Zuma, we're just household names at the beach, and now the beneficiaries are African communities in Africa. So I'm not kidding. I want you to go online right now and look it up. You can find a cute little kid anywhere, and it's incredible. For a dollar a day, you can change their whole life. They get to go to school, get an education, possibly come to Los Angeles, and sue the city of Los Angeles as well, in keeping with their mentor, Matt Dowd. But yeah, you know, the city just keeps asking for these lawsuits, and if there's one thing we can do, it's the dumb city attorney-
Sir, if you-
-to stop writing these dumb ordinances that are illegal and violate federal law, and I'm allowed to call the city attorney dumb.
Sir, if you will please, again, consider that warning. We're asking folks to be able to express their opinions in a respectful way, in the same way that we try to do as well. So with that, we will close our general public comment, thank all of our folks that came down here for a general public comment. We appreciate your presence here. And we'll go to the items that were called special, and I think the first one was item number seven. Is that correct? For Ms. Gruel. We have item number seven?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I could have my mic just come up for a moment. Colleagues, this is something that all of us have been very engaged in, which is safe routes to schools. We've been applying to the state Caltrans for these funds. It's a grant program that makes funding available to make our children's trip to and from school safer. The intention is to allow for pedestrian and bike travel safer for schoolchildren. And so child safety and transportation are two very important issues to me. The department contacted every single council office to find projects, held meetings with a task force of council offices, CLA, and mayor's office, and other departments. And additionally, we, I think, during discussion and public comment on Wednesday, also encouraged, as we begin next year, because this happens, although not dependably on certain dates, but we do know that we're going to have another round, that we begin to work with neighbor councils and have the discussions now, because the turnaround time is so quick for the department, that we be prepared and involve and engage our neighbor councils, homeowners groups, and others, the bicycle coalition that was represented at our transportation committee meeting. One thing I want to just make people aware of is that we're continuing to give Caltrans a hard time, because we had asked in the last filing of our applications that they explain to us their funding mechanism, because currently, we are not receiving our fair share. We have more students in schools, we have more population, we have more traffic problems here, and we're getting a miniscule amount, I believe, on the state level. And so we have, when you look at, we received a fraction of the funding that Northern California received. And so we've asked Caltrans to make that process transparent and to reveal the criteria for awarding those projects. We are still trying to get them to explain to us how they do the funding mechanism, because we do have the largest school system in the entire state of California, and yet we do not get enough funding in the criteria such that we do not get the amount, not only of the ones that we apply for. And so, colleagues, I want to thank you and your staff and the communities that were represented in this. We will continue to ask for our fair share, and I want to thank the department, because they have really been, you know, pounding the table. I mentioned I will call Will Kempton and talk to him, and let him know that this is really, you know, in the era of transparency, which we keep kind of trying to make sure is really true, not providing that information, and that a lot of the people who are represented on some of these selection panels, there are more than from Northern California than Southern California, so there are a variety of things we think need to be corrected. But this is our application. We hope that they, I understand that they were contemplating that if we did well last year, we might not do as well this year, because we receive some funding. The demand is still there, the need is still there around our schools. And so with that, I would ask for an I-vote and to work with all of you as we go forward in the next year. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl, to be followed by Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosendahl.
I just want to thank Ms. Gruel for her leadership on this. I am on the T Committee, and it's great what we're doing. And if my colleagues look at the report, they'll see that each of their districts has a certain strategy that works, and the funding is there for that. But give us a quick explanation of what this program is, for those who don't understand what we just talked about.
Basically, it's a program to try and increase the number of schoolchildren that walk and bicycle to school by fixing safety issues that are adjacent to schools, but also by developing programs to encourage them to walk to school, to educate them on how to safely walk to school, how to bring in law enforcement into it. So it's a very comprehensive view of trying to increase the number of schoolchildren that walk and bicycle to school.
I mean, this is so important, you know? Kids don't get the exercise anymore. We have this obesity business, you know, and to be able to walk to school or to bike to school is not only good from the pollution and climate, and you don't have the SUVs dropping the kids off anymore and all that, but it is absolutely critical for the health of the children and their growth. So it's a big plus. I just put a motion in for bicyclists' Bill of Rights that we hope to take before the full council. You know, bicyclists are not appreciated in this city like they are all over the world, and we need to do more about that. So to get on a bicycle could be a good thing and a safe thing, not only for the bicyclists, but for everybody involved with that. We had an incident in one of my canyons, and this incident, we're not too sure where it goes, but up in Mandeville Canyon, I'm holding a meeting next Monday at 6:30 in my West Illinois complex there, to talk about how the residents and the bicyclists can work together and make it safe. But this program is terrific, and thank you for working with the council members and putting this forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Parks is next, then Mr. Labange and Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to thank DOT for your efforts on Folshe and Western and Expo. One of the unique issues there is not only the significant north-south traffic on Western is a major corridor, but also the pending Expo line that's coming through. One of the things that's probably not known to a lot of people is over 3,000 students at Folshe K through 12, and it is absolutely essential that we look at ways to mitigate that traffic. While going through this grant process, we also found that Western Avenue, for whatever reason, has not been dealt with as far as the disabled curb cuts, and so we'd hope that a part of this is also to take that into account. The other issue that we hope, as we move forward, that we will begin to look at how the existing tunnel can become more of a mitigating factor for the community and the students, because that then takes a number of young people and everyday citizens off the street and puts them into the safety of the tunnel. But as we know with tunnels, they have to be supervised, and we're going to have to have a certain amount of mitigation and security to give people an invitation to walk under Exposition Boulevard via a tunnel. And so we also are moving forward, in addition to this grant, is looking at ways to mitigate the entire area of Folshe, because as you've done for us over at Trenshaw, you've calmed the traffic within about a four-block radius of the school after we had an unfortunate death of a young person walking across the street. And we're in the process of putting paperwork together to ask you to look similarly at the St. Bernadette's in Marlton that runs right into the 10th district into Jim Gilliam Park. But all of that area where we're having young people on the street, we're looking for ways to make it inconvenient for people- to make it inconvenient for people to drive fast, and to look at ways in which we can put four-way signals, the mitigation of speed bumps and humps, but ways in which people could feel as though when they're in those vicinity of schools and parks where kids are, that we are cognizant of the safe routes that people are taking, but also sending a clear message to the vehicular traffic that we want them to slow down even more than the speed limit. The young eight-year-old that died on Marlton recently was walking out of, between traffic or between parked cars. And we're also, with your help, trying to look at ways to add additional parking so that it's not that congestion that's over in that area. But again, any way that we can mitigate and calm the traffic around schools, we think we've gone a long way. And we just appreciate the work you've done on Folshe, because it's part of a larger effort to deal with the transportation and traffic in that area.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Labange. And after Mr. Labange will be Mr. Weisar.
Hey, I'm right here there, Mr. President. Michael, how are you?
Fine.
When's the last time you rode a bicycle?
A couple of weeks ago, I think.
Good, enjoyable trip?
Pretty enjoyable.
Yesterday morning, I'm on my commute in from Silver Lake, counted fifteen bicycles, which was very good. A question I want to ask you, because on safe routes here, you have statistical information, because you're a part of the city government. Do we have statistical information on how many children ride bicycles to their schools?
I don't think we do.
And I think we should. So is this just a communication, or what is this action here?
I, I'm sorry?
What is this action before us?
To approve the list of projects nominated for safe routes to schools' applications, to deliver them to Caltrans, and to direct the appropriate departments to sign funding agreements for any contracts that are approved.
Should it be on a separate cover? Mr. City Attorney, I need your help on this here. Should it be on a separate motion that I would direct you to get statistical data from the Los Angeles Unified School District and other schools? Because you treat schools the same, whether they're public or private, right?
Yes.
Very statistical information on the number of students that ride bikes to schools?
I mean, we will, we will do this as part of the project.
No, no, you don't have to get it. We just ask the school district to do it, because they do statistics all the time, and ask them to put a little box. Because I don't know if they encourage it all, because it's so challenging sometimes. So who would know on this? Would anybody have any idea? What do you think, Mr. City Attorney?
It could be phrased as a report back, or as you could fashion a lawsuit.
But instead of doing a friendly amendment, I probably should do a separate motion, right, on this action?
That would be cleaner for the clerk's purposes, too.
Clarification, as it is. With that being said, as such, I will then defer to Mr. Avak for a motion as such. Thank you so much, Michael, and it is important to have safe rights, safe routes, and awareness, and know that the 5,000-pound car is a tremendous challenge, and safety is so important, and awareness is so important. So keep it up, and public awareness for this is so key. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Michael, for all your hard work on this, and thank you, Ms. Gruel, for your hard work on this as well. I think this is so important, particularly in areas of our city where we have neighborhoods that were built for children to walk to school, and in today's age, they have become major thoroughfares to get from one destination to another. And because of funding or other reasons, the city hasn't really kept up with making sure that those children who continue to walk to that school, who's been there for over 50, 80 years, and now we're hoping to catch up the traffic lanes and everything else. So this is, as Mr. Labange said, very important. I'm thrilled to see here two projects in Council District 14 that really need attention. One of the saddest calls I get is when a young person is hit in these neighborhoods, and particularly in Boa Heights, where you see a lot of traffic, and El Surino, you see a lot of traffic coming from the San Gabriel Valley. As we know, our freeways are clogged coming in, so they take those streets. And oftentimes, you see our mothers pushing their kids in a young car, or young people, as young as the first and second grade, trying to manage their way through this traffic, and people being late to work and all. It's, a lot of work needs to be done, and I know we need to do as much as possible, because the city, I know, does not have enough funding to make these safety changes they need to make, and so we rely on the federal government where this money is coming from and others. So I just want to thank you for the work you're doing, and encourage you to continue to be as creative as possible, and that I hope, as we continue to plan for these monies, that we really do look at the most dangerous areas, and not look at periodically where we need to just spread it around so everybody gets something. We really need to examine the highest need areas as we continue to fund this program. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weisar, for those comments. Colleagues, if we could ask, this item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. We'll ask that to go forthwith. Thank you, Michael, for your hard work. Madam Clerk, I think we'd like to go next to item number 19 by Mr. President Eric Garcetti, and then I think he'll make some introductory remarks, and then we will go to public comment. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I've asked if we take item 19 out of order. I know we have a number of public speaker cards. I want to thank members of the public who have been so engaged in the Hollywood community around one of our greatest landmarks anywhere in the Southland, the Capitol Records Building, which isn't just a museum to the past, but it's a living, breathing part of our recording industry and our music industry. We have some good news to announce about some resolution that's been made between both parties. The Second Street Venture folks are proposing the development adjacent to the Capitol Records site and the Capitol Records folks. But I'd like to reopen the public hearing, so we can hear all the cards that people do have in here today, and then I'll make some concluding remarks as well. So I'd move to reopen for the speakers that we have.
Thank you. It was suggested by your staff. One minute each for those that are here?
Yeah, one minute per speaker, please. And it's a fair hearing matter.
Fair hearing matter, colleagues. I'd ask everyone to please take their seats here in the city council chambers. I'd like to first call up the following: Bree Long, Patty Negri, followed by Cheryl Hello, is Bree, Bree Long? Okay, Patty Negri? Here comes Patty. No need to run, we'll hold for you. Nice to see you.
Hi, thank you, thank you, council members. Actually, I don't think I need to talk, I think that they have it taken care of. I just am in support of Second Street, and I'm glad they've got it all worked out, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming, Patty. Cheryl Folliard? Cheryl still here? Okay, Dan Folliard? Jim McQuiston? Jim McQuiston? Oh, there you are, Jim.
Jim McQuiston. I have submitted some material to the file. Two days ago, I looked at the file on the website to see what was there. None of my things were in the file on the website, and I am the appellant. I was not permitted to talk at the hearing below, except for one minute on eight or nine legal issues, and I had to include my name and address in those one minutes. I am very concerned, as you know. I'm working very hard for the city, trying to keep us, number one. This is a terrible civil rights issue on process.
Mr. McQuiston, if I can just have your attention, I'm going to move, because you are the appellant, and I didn't know about that, that that had happened, I'm going to move that you get four additional minutes, so if we can give him five minutes total, because he is the appellant, on the advice of the city attorney, and I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McQuiston, please continue. You have four minutes additions.
I have submitted several problems, legal problems, with actually doing this. It was in the wrong venue, for example. And then we have a problem with the city charter versus the city ordinance that allowed it to get into that venue. So there are a lot of extensive legal problems, which of course I summarized in that council file, which is not available to anybody on the website. There are things from the developer there, there are things from the city planning department there. One of the things I submitted was, since I'm an engineer, I am concerned about the fact that it's built right on top of one of the major faults, which engineers have predicted is going to cause practically Hollywood to become a rubble. And they put in a demonstration recently, which I put in the file, that buildings of this size cannot be controlled by our building and safety department adequately. We do have to control the height, just because the California code does not protect people. I am very, very concerned about this. I have the material in the council file. There is no reason for us to go into it off the cuff like this. But I do say, please, please, look at the council file materials, the written materials. It's not been put in where people can look at it on the website. I am very, very concerned that people will be killed. There is no question about that. People will be killed. The city will be liable, as a conservative estimate, for over $3.8 billion. Look at our yearly budget. That is just something we cannot afford. So for a lot of reasons, we do have to control the buildings on top of this fault, and we cannot roll back what has already been put into the zoning code without giving them money. So we shouldn't be wanting to exceed what is in the zoning code right now. We can control some of the death and destruction by doing that. But we do have to have a better way of allowing zoning variances. This is what this is, a zoning variance. Regardless of what the council believes, the state Supreme Court has already said, this is a variance-type operation. It comes under the California Constitution. You have to watch out for equal protection of law. And these things, we have not observed. Those are the basis of our legal observations in the file. And I wouldn't be so upset about this if it wasn't for the fact that we do this as a routine measure, and we do not look at the danger. The sequoia does not go into the danger. We did not analyze that. People back east said, oh, we don't have to worry about this, because we don't know about this earthquake fault. Everybody out here, since I was a little kid, knows about this fault. So these are the things which we do have to concern ourselves with, and constitutional violations are personal. As I have told the United States Senate, you don't push constitutional problems off on a government. They are personal liabilities. So you are at fault, you are at risk if you violate the Constitution.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes, before we go on to the other public comment, public speakers?
Just for the record, Council President and colleagues, I chaired the committee by which this gentleman did speak. As the appellant, I always give the appellant the time they need to express why they're appealing. There was more than one minute. So that's for the record. I have staff here that witnessed that. So again, he was given more than one minute, and again, not to be combative, but just for the record, lay out what did occur in Plumb Committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Like to, is Richard Slosson here? Richard Slosson? Okay. Nyla Arcalanian? Okay. RJ Comer? And then followed by Maureen Schultz.
Good morning, honorable council members. My name is RJ Comer. I'm an attorney at Armbrister and Goldsmith, and I represent the applicant, in this case, 6230 Yucca. We are here today to have a project approval, and also are very happy to have an agreement with Capitol Records on some private mitigation. What I want to talk to you about today is, in addition to that private agreement, the noise and vibration construction mitigation measures that have been included in this project are the most strictest enforceable, comprehensive mitigation measures that, in my experience, have ever been imposed on a construction project in the city of Los Angeles for the protection of its neighbor. They're simply fantastic mitigation measures that reduce to almost nothing, but not nothing, the possibility that there might be an interruption of the important echo chambers at Capitol Records. We applaud the city staff and the leaders of the city for helping us craft those mitigation measures, as well as the involvement of Capitol Records, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name's Maureen Schultz, and I'm the Senior Vice President of Chairman of Real Estate at EMI Music. I am here today representing Capitol Records Studio. At this time, EMI will not be withdrawing its appeal with respect to the proposed project at 6230 Yucca on Hollywood. We have executed a term sheet in furtherance of an agreement that we anticipate will reflect the terms we have negotiated in the term sheet. EMI believes we have negotiated a favorable agreement with Second Street Ventures. This agreement will protect the acoustical integrity and operations of Capitol Records Studio, and ensure it continues as one of the world's premier recording facilities, as it has for more than 50 years. We want to thank Second Street for agreeing to the significant number of measures such as construction equipment and activities will be prohibited after 10:00 a.m. within 40 feet of our property line, in order to make sure that our clients' sessions are not interrupted. Second Street will not use any steel-tracked construction equipment, and will use alternative measures to drive soldier piles. We thank Councilman Eric Garcetti and his staff for the help they have provided during the very difficult negotiations. Specifically, we thank Kelly Bernard. Moving forward, we look to the city council, under Councilman Garcetti's leadership, to ensure that these conditions are enforced. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We gave extra time because they are the applicant, or the appellant in that as well. Rick Rogers, from local IBEW, Local 45.
Yes, thank you for giving me this time. I'm here as a, representing Capitol Records. I'm an IBEW, which is International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Business Rep, Local 45, and we represent approximately 17 workers at Capitol Records, who do mastering and recording, and also building engineers. This is a very sensitive subject, obviously, to Capitol Records and to their financial pluses in the future. And we are concerned about the project. We understand there's been a tentative agreement reached, and we just hope that Second Street Ventures holds up to their terms of the agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody, for being here and for the hours that you've put into this as well. This project, colleagues, which is before you, which I ask you to support today because of where we're at, I don't know if we could have been there necessarily a week ago, but in this past week, we were able to get the parties together, basically to boil this down. This is a property right next to Capitol Records. The concern of Capitol Records has never been necessarily a development, per se, next to them, but we have a very sacred studio, the echo studios that are down, subterranean, that could potentially, during construction, be disrupted. And the idea, for me, as a musician, it was very important. For me, as a strong backer of Capitol, and part of our new golden age in Hollywood, is making sure we hold on to our last golden age. And Capitol Records has been there through all of those times, during the good times, the bad times, and now the good times again. It's a very difficult business these days, the music business, we know that. And anything that we do on the knife's edge to tip it one way or the other is something that we can't, in good conscience, do, which is why we've asked, time and time again, Second Street Ventures to go back to the table with Capitol Records, and I'm very pleased, and I want to thank both parties for the time that they put in, the personal attention that you've all given. I know we've had countless hours of phone calls, transatlantic or transcontinental phone calls and conversations and meetings, and the amazing letters that people wrote us. We love that building. We protected it a few years ago for making sure it didn't turn into housing that could continue to be a vibrant part of the music industry. And I think that as we move forward with all the great things that are happening in Hollywood, we have to be conscious of our past, whether it's down the street at the Palladium, which we didn't let get knocked down and is now being restored, or whether it's some of the new projects that are coming up alongside old Hollywood, like just across the street at the W Hotel Project. This project received, as a housing project, great support from the neighborhood. You heard Hollywood United Neighborhood Council had unanimous approval, Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council, the Hollywood Del Civic Association, the Design Review... Neighborhood Council, the Hollywood Del Civic Association, the Design Review Committee that we constitute through the CRA gave it great marks, Argyle Civic Association, Hollywood Arts Council, and the list goes on and on. But we also had an appeal that we took very seriously, and we weren't ready to give our stamp of approval until that kind of private party negotiation had resolved itself. I'd like to ask the staff a couple of questions, if I may, if I can ask staff to come forward. We had, just from our good friend Jim McQuiston, who lives in the area and who's been a great neighborhood activist and somebody I know who cares just as deeply about Hollywood as any of us, some concern about fault line and earthquake that may be in the area. Could you address that, something Planning, Building and Safety is responsible for, what we did or did not look at, and why you feel that your staff recommendation, which I'm asking you all to support today, does address that?
Charlie Roush, Planning Department Staff, I'm a senior city planner for the area. The environmental impact report for this project did analyze, among other things, fault lines. The project site was cited as not being an Alquis Priolo Fault Line Fault Zone, which is the primary indicator of earthquake faults. I think it did identify a thrust fault approximately seven miles underneath the surface, which, you know, do cause earthquakes, but was not listed as a significant impact.
And just to be clear, there's no place in Los Angeles, I mean, I live adjacent to Elysian Park. I believe there's a fault line that may go quite close to my house, maybe even under my house. We can never completely eradicate the danger that some earthquake of some magnitude will indeed cause damage throughout the city, as we've seen in the past. That is still the case here, right? There's not zero liability?
Correct.
Risk rather than liability.
The, what happens is if there is a surface fault line that has been identified, we do not permit any construction beyond, within 50 feet on either side of the line.
Okay. And in terms of the concerns that were brought up, in terms of the echo chambers within 40 feet from the subterranean parking that is proposed in this, and we changed, that distance is actually a little closer, we found out, about 19 feet potentially, 20 feet?
I'm not, I don't really want to answer the question, I'm not sure.
I just want to make sure we have that on the record as well. And as part of the private party agreement, we have not only an agreement to put in an account some money should business be scared away, or if there's actual, not scared away, excuse me, let me rephrase that. There's money that's in an account should we actually have damages that are incurred during recording in those chambers. But we also have money that's been put upfront to allow us to help publicize, not only is this a great studio, it is open, it is safe, we are mitigating anything that would happen, and we want people to continue to use this great site. And that is something that we will privately and publicly be doing all we can to partner with Capitol to ensure that in the music community, musicians' community, the artist's community, that is well-known and well-publicized as well. There are 28 mitigations that are in this agreement today, is that, on our side?
That's correct. Linda Sneth, Los Angeles City.
Could you walk us through some of the main ones? You don't have to do all 28, but what are some of the main mitigations?
Some of the primary mitigation that was added or part of the environmental addendum address specific construction techniques. These techniques will amount to trying to limit the vibration, any type of ground shaking, and also noise regarding or happening during the construction phase. Also, there are mitigation measures that have been added related to constant communication between Capitol Records and the appellants, or the applicants in this case, primarily having a specialist on-site at all times during the construction phase, in case there are any issues that arise.
And I want to just add to that, it's not part of the formal agreement, but my staff will be available at a moment's notice when those things happen as well to help, because I think we know how quickly that can happen. The last thing we want is good people doing their jobs, saying, sorry, we've got to do building, and, you know, we'll talk to you in a few hours. By that time, we may have lost a recording session costing many, many tens of thousands of dollars. So I just want to establish that for the record, too, that we will stay vigilant on that as well. What are some of the, a couple of others?
Some of the other issues, once again, have to do with keeping communication lines open. For instance, when there are major events going to occur within the city, say the Grammys, for instance, EMI and the appellants will be in communication. And if there is a need to disrupt any type of activity occurring within the echo chambers, that schedule will be looked at jointly, and compromises will be made.
If I may add, there are, you have asked for some specifics.
Sure.
Probably the most important are not using tracked vehicles, but rather rubber-tired vehicles to cut down on vibration. And also, that when the soldier piles for the building are being put in, that they not be done by pile driving, but they're done by augers, which are basically big drills, which you put it in. So it's much more mitigating for vibration, which is the major problem.
We all learned a lot more about vibrations than we ever knew before this started, so thank you for that as well. So colleagues, let me just end by congratulating four parties here. First, I want to thank Second Street Ventures for believing in the new Hollywood. I think it's important to continue to bring developers who are believing that we can have the next iteration of what will work for the community and create a walkable community with mixed use, a place where people can go down to the farmer's market two blocks away, catch a play at the Pantages, go out to dinner, get on the Red Line subway to go downtown to see a museum, where all of that is within three or four blocks. But secondly, and even more so, let me thank Capitol Records. None of that would be possible for folks to come in today if Capitol Records hadn't invested yesterday. So as we move forward, we have to do that in a way that protects the past, and that comes first. And that's why we've been so careful about this every single step of the way. And we're going to continue to be that partner to Capitol, no matter what your needs are, in a very difficult business, to keep you there. We love you, and we want to make sure you're still there, including the musicians who use Capitol. Third, let me thank the community, because the community got engaged. And a lot of places where communities are good at articulating only what we're against, Hollywood stands, I think, quite against that. We are good at articulating also what we are for, the sort of future that we want to see, what we don't want to see, but also how we can get to yes and how we can get good projects and not just kill them, but actually build up the city that we all want to enjoy and see. And lastly, let me thank Kelly Bernard from my staff for her very hard, hard work, burning the midnight oil. It's Bring Your Daughter to Work Day today with her, so we really appreciate you being here especially, and thank you all. I urge your eye vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labonge.
Mr. Garcetti, I want to thank you, and you mentioned Ms. Bernard, but your whole staff, because you're transforming Hollywood, and you're transforming Hollywood in the right way on Vine Street, we're transforming with the Red Line. Charlie, what do you think about this? You've been around a long time. How excited are you? You're a planner.
It's nice to see construction cranes back in the city.
That's right. But also, we are protecting the interest of Capitol Records, which is so important, because of all the work that was done there and that history. I hope Capitol Records stays there forever, and musicians have a place to come and create their sound, which is so important. Welcome those who do new things, but make sure you protect the old and you balance it out and you resolve it. Mr. Garcetti, when it's done, you may get a gold record for this, for your accomplishments and doing a great job in Hollywood. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank those who've advocated and the compromise that solved this problem.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge, and I'd like to congratulate Mr. Garcetti for working through all of the issues and to protect Capitol Records and the community. Colleagues, if you could now, we'll take a vote on this item. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Congratulations. Madam Clerk, I think we're going to go to our next item, which is item number 16. We're holding some of the ordinances on the desk for 12 members. Item 16 was called special for a card, Mr. Zuma Dog, followed by Matt Dowd.
Yes, one minute.
Mr. Zuma Dog, please, before you speak, Mr. Parks, Mr. Parks, I think you wanted to recuse yourself on item number 16?
Yes.
Just one, we'll put you back to two minutes.
What?
Hold on just one minute.
Oh, hold on, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Zuma Dog.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Parks had to recuse himself. It's about the case of Christopher G.L. Wallace, year-year-otherwise known as Notorious B.I.G. had to just say, the city, they're still trying to settle this matter of Notorious B.I.G. Right now, the city, they have to spend outside council money. But guess what? They have to have new outside council. So whatever money was already spent for outside council for these years for the Notorious B.I.G., that Councilmember Parks had to recuse himself, now we got, we need the Price is Right sound, or the wop, 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 because now we have to start over with new outside council, starting from scratch. So all that money just went into that gigantic hole of the sucking of money down the toilet with outside council. How ironic. Councilmember Parks, the one most against outside council. This one's because of him.
Thank you. Mr. Matt Dowd? Yes, excuse me, Mr. City Attorney?
And just for the record, the attorney on the outside council matter is changing firms, and that's why this action is needed. It's the same attorney.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Mr. Dowd?
Yeah, either way, it's, it's an outside attorney. These are, these are the real big money items on the agenda where this, you know, money's going. And I'm sure there's probably some ways that, you know, you could have solved this a long time ago, like our issue as well. I know how it works in the city. They just spend money, they've got stubborn heads, the attorneys, they don't even know what they're doing half the time. We beat them off the beach. We beat the Los Angeles City attorneys straight off the beach without an attorney. We're not attorneys. So that's why they've got to spend all this money on outside attorneys. This is another matter where, you know, the city of Los Angeles is liable for some kind of damages, and obviously, this is a famous one. Zuma Dog's right. And this is just more money down the drain.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item is item number 17. If we could ask Zuma Dog, followed by Arnold Sachs, followed by Matt Dowd. Mr. Zuma Dog.
Oh, yes. Ed Reyes is so happy I made it today. This is about his L.A. River project. First of all, the master plan, and first of all, this involves the CRA Community Redevelopment Agency, the biggest robbers of money from the community. Check the L.A. Weekly this week. See what they have to say about the CRA. All right? Now, this other thing about, what this L.A. River really is about, it's an excuse to raise the property value, to jam high-density housing all up and down this watershed that's not even a river. It's like a wishing well pond, is all they're going to be able to do with this thing. And again, nothing but an excuse to raise the property values, to jam high-density housing against every zoning and every planning recommendation that's ever been imposed. And guess what, people? The good news is, well, we're going to have this gold line coming all down, and all the housing's going to be along the gold line, everybody. So it's okay that we're already in gridlock. Let me tell you, people, this city council is responsible for, in five and 10 years, you will be legends of history. The gridlock of this city is going to be intolerable. You're not going to be able to move goods down the ports.
You could just not, you can, please speak.
Yes, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. You're not going to be able to move the goods down the highway for the rest of the country. You're screwing up the region, baby. You're screwing it up big time, because guess what? They based this whole thing along the gold line mass transit, and now they refuse $340 million of federal money, and they're not building the gold line. That's right, all the gold line construction, you see, they pulled the plug. That's not happening unless you, the voters, approve a sales tax of up to a penny to continue the gold line. Yes, council members, if you read L.A. Daily Blog, you'd be aware of this story. I'm seeing council members looking confused. Yes, $340 million, no gold line, all the density's continuing. You are screwing up this city big time.
Thank you. Mr. Sachs, we do call your name so that you could come up to the front in that time. Mr. Sachs, followed by Mr. Dowd.
Yes, good morning again, Arnold Sachs. Another plan by the City Council to allocate funding. I'd like to point out that I hold in my hand here an editorial, "Bogus Billboard Ban: City of Los Angeles Needs A New And Honest Plan To Regulate Outdoor Plans." Today's editorial, "A Deceitful Ploy: L.A. City Hall's Misuse Of Cherished Fee Funds Breaks No Laws Only Promises." This one from June 30th. "Give Them More Money: Elected Officials Must Justify Tax-Hiking Plans." So here we have another plan to get more money for the city. Doesn't make sense. Somebody must be missing the boat. All these editorials are attacking city council, city plans for funding. Nobody's saying, "City Hall, doing a great job." Yet here we are again, asking the public, "We've got, we got a plan." You're telling the public, "We got a plan, trust us." You know what "trust us" means in L.A.? Use your imagination. I'd also, I wasn't going to say, "Mr. City Attorney," relax. City Council Attorney, excuse me. I'd also like to point out, well, I'm not going, I'm going to save that, but we need some concrete ideas here. We need some definition here, and not some wily promises, some double talk, and who knows what's going to happen in the end. The public, Lollipop Day, stop feeding the public these sucker lies. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your answers.
Thank you. Mr. Matt Dowd.
First of all, hold on, Mr. Garcetti, it's great to be in the shot. Zuma Dog, Eric Garcetti, Matt Dowd, that doesn't happen very often, Channel 35, that's a sneak peek of a moment that you don't get too often. Anyway, let me get back on topic, Mr. City Attorney. The Ad hoc River Committee. See, the thing about this that gets me, there's a part in here, Part II, "Request The CRA To Work With The DWP To Facilitate Community Stakeholder Engagement On Issues Related To Redevelopment." But all we hear about is community stakeholder complaints about not being heard, and they come from Mr. Reyes's actions a lot. We had one already today. We had another one over the Liquor Arcade. I've had my own experience with being ignored and defied and denied my comment, or whatever it is, so I know it's true, and it happens all the time, so cut it out.
Thank you. That item, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, recall, we wanted to make sure that we were inclusive in the process. What you have before you is our ability to look at the San Antonio Wash area, the watershed, and essentially provide the type of access to the kind of planning that we need to continue to do throughout the watershed area. We start off with, just with the river. Now this stretches us out into the San Antonio corridor, and following the recommendation and suggestion of Councilman Alarcon about a year ago, we're able to get to this place that allocates the resources and sets a directive to reach our objectives. And it's amazing how a little bit of information can be interpreted in such difficult and misleading ways, as some of our public speakers tend to hold on to one little phrase and blow out a whole scenario that has nothing to do with reality. The fact is, we're going to have communities throughout the corridor defining themselves. They'll be looking at the specific plans, seeing how they want to interpret their neighborhoods along the river, and the process allows for that. So we look forward to the community's input and how they define their own zoning patterns, how they want to look at open space, create open space. They choose to do housing, if they choose to do commercial, that'll be also available to them. So the committee will have that discretion, they will have that ability, despite what others might say, that are totally misinformed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and for your leadership on this issue. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next is item number 12, and this is an ordinance with a card.
Yes. Mr. Sachs? Arnold Sachs? This is item number 12.
Again, Arnold Sachs, I have some real concerns regarding item number 12 and the language in it, creating officials. Creating efficiencies? As I just noticed in item number 17, there seems to be a real gap between what the city council considers efficiencies, and what the public or the press consider efficiencies. Narrow the gap down, and then maybe we'll have some efficiencies. And if you might, uh, there was a comment regarding rules for the public. Please review the rules regarding items noticed for public notice, and what the status of those are. Thank you for your time and your attention and your answers.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. This item is now before us. Uh, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven eyes.
Next item?
Next is item number 13, and there is a card on this item.
Mr. Zuma Dog, item number 13, you don't want to speak on this item. Okay, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 13, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. Our next item is item 14. Mr. Zuma Dog, on item number 14. You do not want to speak on item 14. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 14, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next is item number 20, and there's a card on this item.
Yes, uh, we have two, two cards on this. Candido?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I was one of the bidders on the Van Nuys Library. Uh, we had to post $10,000 to be considered, uh, serious bidders. My issue is that after it was sold, there's been problems. The individual who bought the, the property was eager to move into the community, to, uh, be part of the community, but the information that was given to us, the information that was provided as far as the structural issues, et cetera, they were false. And I, I feel that this should be given a little time, because one of the things that we see before this council all the time is lawsuits. This could potentially become a lawsuit. Please, I just ask you that you hold off on this, maybe even just a week or so. Take a look at it. There were, uh, there are issues with it. Uh, we were given information that was misleading. I would just ask that you, please, uh, take a look at it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Candido. Zuma Dog?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 20, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next is item number 21, and there's a card on this item.
Mr. Zuma Dog?
Okay.
Matt Dowd?
So, yeah, thank you. Let me take a couple of minutes here on this one. I'm serious about the, uh, child sponsorship, too. My wife and I, we just got married recently, and now we got the beautiful hassle-free child, no pregnancy involved or anything. It's a very good way to have a child, and then be, do something fulfilling, so I wanna mention that again. Especially since we're talking about relocating tenants, housing, and this is a good one, I think. We're gonna put this one through. We're providing, uh, assistance for relocated, these mobile parks, mobile homes, and, uh, this is something I'm big on, the accommodation in the cities, a lot of homeless. In fact, we've got a museum, Eric was talking about coming downtown to see museums. Skid Row is becoming a famous museum now. You can see the, the legacy of homeless in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 21, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, I believe we'd like to consider items nine, 10, and 11, or just actually consider them now, and if Ms. Perry does arrive, we will reconsider those that are ordinances. But if, uh, could open the roll on items nine, 10, and 11, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. Next item is-
Next item is number 22, and there's a card on this item.
Mr. Zuma Dog?
Item number 22.
Matt Dowd?
Item 22.
Mr. Zuma Dog, you choose not to speak on this item? Okay. Mr. Dowd?
Yeah, thank you. Item 22, Matt Dowd. Uh, it's another housing issue, so I'm interested in that. And in fact, I gotta get with Janice Han, that Habitat for Humanity, we'll have to do that sometime, next time they're around, I'll definitely come and get involved in that, now that I've got my charities. See, I'm back at work, I got my people working at the beach, where, where we're all doing good, and we're spreading the wealth, and, and, you know, making sure the community's happy. We're trying to work with LAPD, but that's slightly off the topic of this one. So, um, I'm concerned about the money we get, this federal money for housing, and everyone says, "Oh, let's create affordable housing," and they have all the consultants, and architects, and all these white-collar people take all the money, and then there's no real affordable housing left. So, uh, I'm glad we're getting together with the county, and state, federal, we need to all work together, it's time to do that. This, um, cronyism's over, we have to end that kind of thing right now.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 22, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. We like that item to go forthwith. We do have, uh, the next item, um, I know Ms. Han will be the first speaker. We do have a few comment cards, we'll go to that first. Uh, Mr. Zuma Dog, followed by Arnold Sacks, uh, followed by Candido Mares. Mr. Zuma Dog?
All right. They warned me not to talk about this when I'm public comment, it's the most important issue in the city, it's huge. We're talking about the gang parcel tax. Janice Han wants to put this on the ballot for $30 million a year? Taxpayer money, that's right, it's gonna be on the ballot. Property owners, they wanna tax you, it's gonna be $30 million for gang intervention, youth development. First of all, I'd like to say, very disappointed that my friend Dennis Zein is not here today for the vote. Very easy to sit publicly and speak out against it in the media, and look like the, the, the good guy, "Oh, I'm saying that we need more accountability, and we need da, 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 da." But where are you when it's time to vote? Where are you when it's time? I don't see you here today, okay? I know we're friends, but you know what? It just goes to show, man, I'll blast you if I don't care. So he should be here. Weiss is not here, and Perry is not here, and so-
And please direct your comments to the body of the council.
... that those three people aren't here on this important vote, don't cut me off again. Now, the thing is, with this money, of course, we need intervention money, money for the streets. But just like everything in this city, they wrap it up in a warm and fuzzy, okay? It's for the elderly, it's for the kids, it's for this and that, this time it's for gang prevention. But the community, the money, as expected, it doesn't trickle down because of things like consultants. Consultants will be getting this money. Do you wanna pay more tax money to pay for consultants and surveys? You might have heard $200,000 going for 12 kids to do a research project about the Broadway Historic District. I call it PR, I call it market research. So we need to do, and then what happens is, you think you're getting some things with this money, "Oh, we're solving the problem, we're spending $30 million on gang intervention prevention to help the streets," but it goes into a big sucking hole of nothingness, and they, a very small percentage makes it to where it goes, and then it falls into further disrepair. It's not ready to go on the ballot until we have full accountability of where the money goes.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks. After that will be Candido Mares.
Yes, good morning again, Arnold Sacks. I'd like to point out a couple of things regarding this, more money. With all the discussions that have been, excuse me, that have been held, and I'd like to thank Councilman Zein for bringing up the fact that there was an item in this tax call that would allow increases every year. And according from the, uh, Daily Breeze, um, the increases would have amounted to only the pennies every year. We're, mostly we're talking pennies a year. Please, take the pennies from your salary and provide the difference in that. Your $178,000, take the pennies every year and provide the difference at the increase that you're looking for. But thank, uh, thank Mr. Zein, Councilman Zein, for eliminating that from this action. So what else is to be eliminated that we don't know about? What else is not being presented to the public? "A Deceitful Ploy: L.A. City Hall's Misused Trash Fee Funds Breaks No Laws Only Promises." Turns out that the funding that the city grants for, for new police officers amounts to $137 million, more than was necessary. But we need the money. We don't have the police officers. We need to pay, raise the fees. We need some accountability is what we need. We need some people here who stand up to be honest, and, what's the word? Open and transparent. Duty and humanity, for duty and humanity. Thank goodness we're the Three Stooges. What's up with this trash fee? What's up with the gang tax fee? All these fees, nobody knows where the money's being gen- we know what the money is to be generated, but nobody knows where it goes to. Just like L.A. CMTA. We need more money, more money, more money, but nobody knows where it goes. Thank you for your time, your answers to this question.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Candido Mares is our next speaker. After that will be Carla Sanger.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. Uh, this is the reason why I came down here and to support Ms. Han, because, you know, a lot of people say this is a tax. I don't consider this a tax. I consider this, save our children. And, you know, we all think that, uh, it can't happen to us, that our children are safe. Doesn't matter where you live in this city. You can live in Porter Ranch, you can live in San Pedro, you can live in North Hollywood, the West Side, your child is in danger of being affected by gangs and drugs. I know that personally, my wife and I know it. And we would give everything we had if we could save our, our boys. I'd give you everything I have. I'd sell my soul to the devil. But I can't. But you can bring this. That's right, Mr. Carnes, I would. You know that? I would sell my soul. Because integrity is everything. You know what I'm saying? But this is very important. This is such a big issue. And I wanna thank those of you who are good parents that have done great jobs with your kids, because some of us have made mistakes, and our children haven't been perfect. But never give up on a child, because you never know where that child's gonna go. A child today that can be in, in a gang and in drugs can someday become this very creative, great person, and I've seen it happen. And a lot of people criticize the L.A. Bridges and a lot of these other programs. I can give you children, I can show you kids that are going to college today for their masters that were part of those programs. Yes, we need accountability. The Jeopardy program with LAPD is probably one of the finest programs you'll have. The YO program, Mr. Alarcon's district is absolutely one. All of you know where those programs are. So I thank you, and I ask that, uh, the people really, really reach out into their hearts and take that money from their back pockets and save. The child you save today may be this, your own child or grandchild someday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carla Sanger. Good afternoon, and congratulations on the mural.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you, President Garcetti, members of council. I'm Carla Sanger, president and CEO of L.A.'s Best, and, uh, personally and professionally for 40 years, I've been working in neighborhoods to reduce the tolerance for violence. This is the time where we have everything in place to do what it takes to be able to make a difference by accountability for value. I applaud everyone who spoke to you that said, "We need to know where funds are going. We need to know that programs like L.A.'s Best," and there are many, many high-quality programs in this city that have value, and that can show and prove they have value. Yesterday, we had the good fortune to reveal a large 260-foot mural on a construction wall that surrounds the new detention center. The message of that wall was very, very clear. Due time at L.A.'s Best. The message of that wall was prevention, and I would add intervention, and prevention and intervention absolutely decrease detention. It's not to say that detention isn't critical to the city, because it's a three-fold approach, and we know that prevention and intervention and detention together, but look at the cost. Look at the cost of detention. Look at the cost of prevention. Look at the cost of intervention. And I had reporters ask me, "So you have a study with L.A.'s Best that shows that kids in L.A.'s Best are 30% less involved in juvenile crime over time?" We got that study. That's from the Department of Justice, and that's as valid and reliable as any data that any city council anywhere in the United States could see, and we're proud of it. Thank you. But I wanna read you some words of children, because the reporter said to me, "So how do you know?" Well, maybe I won't.
I think I will begin to conclude.
Thank you. That's very kind. I'll read just one, because it's pretty amazing. "I used to be like one of those popcorn seeds that just won't pop, but once I joined L.A.'s Best, I finally popped." Well, that's a pretty visual image, and we want the opportunity in L.A.'s Best and every prevention and intervention program in this city that can show quality and accountability. Thank you very much.
Great. Then we'll close our, thank you very much, Ms. Sanger, and thank you for the great work that you do. Uh, we'll now go to Ms. Han as our first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Today, uh, we're gonna be asking for your support to, once again, to place a measure on this November's ballot to raise $30 million annually for gang prevention, after-school programs, job training programs. Uh, I have been so honored to work with Councilwoman Perry Angrol to form Mothers Against Gang Violence, and create a way that we can finally have a dedicated funding stream, as was recommended in the Advancement Project report, for programs that will keep our kids from joining gangs in the first place, and then giving those who need it real job-training skills so they can have a life of productivity. Uh, as you'll remember, we've actually taken two votes on this measure. Both times, uh, we had a unanimous vote here on the city council to support placing this on a future ballot. Uh, you'll recall that, uh, we were gonna place this on the February ballot, and then, uh, in the interest of Prop S, we decided to delay this measure until November. And I was very proud when this council made it very clear, uh, that they supported this concept and wanted to place it on the November ballot. Over the past several months, we've made great progress in how we are fighting gang violence in Los Angeles. Progress that I think, uh, makes us better situated to put this measure on the ballot in November and gain the trust of the public. We've shown that we're finally ready to do what we need to do, uh, to end gang violence in Los Angeles. We're ready to invest in communities with the most needs. We know that a decrease in gang violence in the worst neighborhoods in Los Angeles will benefit all of Los Angeles. Several weeks ago, this council heard from about 40 people that convened here in city council chambers during public comment to call on us to finally do something. We heard from parents who had lost children, and we heard from young people. We heard from concerned citizens, and we heard from service providers, and they all said the same thing. It's time for this city council to do something to increase the funding on the front end of our children's lives for gang prevention, after-school, job training, programs that we know work, like we just heard from Carla Sanger, L.A.'s Best. And we know that when kids are in an after-school program, they do better in school. The crime around a school that has an after-school program goes down, and we know that these kids stay in school. We need an after-school program in every single school in the city of Los Angeles, in all of our communities. And we know that programs like the Gang Alternative Program, that go into the fourth grade and teach our kids how to not be recruited, uh, by a gang, give them the skills to say no to gangs. We know these programs work, but they need more funding. And we've heard from Chief Bratton, who said, "We cannot arrest our way out of this problem." And I think we all know that, because for every person we arrest in a relation to gang violence, there is another kid across town being pressured to join a gang for fear of his own safety. If we really wanna win this war on gangs, we have to out-recruit the gang members, and we can only do that by providing before-school activities, after-school activities, job-training activities, so that we can really give people a way, uh, to be productive in this society. Uh, once drafted, this measure will be the most accountable measure that we have ever put before voters. Not only will we see a Citizens Oversight Committee, there will be regular fiscal and performance audits by the controller. We will ensure that programs that do not work do not get funded. We will only fund programs that work. And if the voters agree with us and approve this measure, we will see $30 million annually that will go to increase our efforts to fight gang violence in the city. This funding will allow us to deepen, and more importantly, expand, the gang reduction zones- zones. Many of us were disappointed in the gang reduction zones because some of them were not in our communities. This funding will allow us to target those troubled areas like Venice in Councilmember Rosendahl's area, Canoga Park in Councilmember Zine's area, and Harbor Gateway in my council district, that we know those kids are at risk for joining a gang. Today, the Mothers Against Gang Violence were asking you to join us in continuing to move in that direction by allowing the voters of Los Angeles to decide whether or not they are willing to pay $3 a month, about 10 cents a day, to finally rid our city of gang violence and raise up a generation of young people who will have a real choice on whether or not they join a gang. This is the right time to go to the voters and I hope you will join today in having a unanimous vote. I think our country right now is full of hope. I think our country is wanting change in so many areas. And I think if this measure passes, colleagues, this will change Los Angeles forever for good.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas is our next speaker.
I'm very proud to say that my wife and I have been raising our children together now for 16 years. And we have a 15-year-old son and a 13-year-old son. And it's unfortunate that, in this great country, in this great city, that a father like myself would have to tell his son, who loves to ride a skateboard just a few blocks away to his friend's house, that I am not going to let him do that. And I had this conversation with him about six months ago. He's now about 5'9". He is unfortunately the perfect profile for a drive-by shooting. He is not involved in gangs or what have you. But he happens to have brown skin and he lives in a blue-collar community in the San Fernando Valley. And that's enough to be a profile, to be shot at by somebody who says, "What gang are you a member of?" And no matter what the answer is from that innocent individual walking down the street or riding a skateboard, he's likely to be shot seconds later. It happens all too often in this city. And we've been trying hard over the last few decades to figure out how we can address this issue. But I'm here to remind all of you that we have ways in which we can address it. The Ad-Hoc Committee on Gangs, and I'd like to thank Janice Hahn for her leadership in sitting through hours and hours and hours of testimony and listening to departments and organizations and families and mothers about what it means to them for us to do what we need to do about this. And we have, in fact, made progress. We've changed the way we do business in the city as of July 1st of this year. We now have a new system in place that is based on the research and the information that we've received throughout these countless hours of information. And in addition to that, through the commitment of the community coming together like never before and giving in their input and us taking it in and taking into account their perspective as well. And on top of that, let me remind you that today, in the state of California, you, the taxpayer, pay close to $250,000 a year to incarcerate young people in the state of California. That's the cost to incarcerate a young person for 12 months in the state of California. When it comes to adults, it costs you, the taxpayer, over $46,000 a year. Now, if you break that down, if we just take this $30 million, if the voters vote for this, and we deter and get 120 kids not to go to jail, we will already save $30 million. And if we go past that and we get to the point where 1,000 kids do not commit crimes and go to jail in this city, we will now save you, the taxpayer, $250 million. So this is the best investment we can make on behalf of the taxpayers. But more importantly, I would love to see the day that children can play in the streets like we all did, like the children of today cannot. We owe it to ourselves to put this before the voters so that the voters can decide if that's what they want. For a simple $3 a month, we can restore dignity to our streets, we can restore safety to our community. This is the missing link. This is the missing key, prevention and intervention in the proper communities throughout the city. That's the missing link that's been missing for these few decades. And this is a great solution. And with this $30 million a year, we will make a tremendous difference. And I can guarantee you this. With this $30 million, we will have deterred at least 100 to 200 to 300 children throughout the city from going to jail. And more importantly, we will be on our way to restoring dignity to the children of our city and to the families who cannot walk the streets and who do not feel safe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Just before Ms. Gruel, who's our next speaker, we did want to bring the CLA forward for the technical amendments if necessary on this. If we could have staff come forward and make sure we cover that as well in the record.
Excuse me, just very briefly. A city attorney indicated that I needed to say that there were some swapped-out pages to make some textual corrections in the ordinance. We added the name of the, some of the acts that are referenced in the ordinance. Again, these are technical changes. We corrected typographical error. We did some cross-referencing between the expenditure section and the purposes section. And we clarified, in reference to the data, it had to be both historic and current. So for the record, those changes are, excuse me, with this clerk.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you very much to my colleague, Councilwoman Hahn. Today, we do have an opportunity to strengthen the city forces that address gang intervention and to make our city safer. It does not matter where you live in the city of Los Angeles today, you are impacted by gang violence, whether it is in the San Fernando Valley, whether it is in San Pedro or Watts or East Los Angeles or Venice, yes, West Side, Mr. Rosendahl. We know that the gang statistics continue to rise. And as someone who was lucky enough to work with Carla Sanger in the creation of LA's Best, and as Ms. Hahn and I were talking about, she has the same passion she did 20 years ago on this issue, that prevention and intervention is a component of what we need to do to address gang violence. And when I met with Luisa Prudhomme, who came to see me, who lives in Sanlito Hanga, and when she sat there and cried about her son being killed through gang violence and that she would do anything to bring her son back and anything even more so to be able to stop that gang violence from happening and any mother having to go through what she had to go through, she was for it, whatever sacrifice it took. Because her son had the ultimate sacrifice, which was being killed in gang violence. And as Ms. Hahn mentioned, the importance of the chief of police and that he's indicated we can arrest our way out of this. Yes, it is difficult times and yes, I had some concerns initially, as Ms. Hahn, when we started talking about this a few years ago, about how this money was going to be spent and ensuring that the efforts, particularly of the Controller, and that we had the reviews that were necessary to make sure the checks and balances were. And that we changed business as usual, that it was not the same programs before that may have been effective but had no demonstrative really reviews and transparency and benchmarking and accomplishments at the end. And if there's any, I think, ordinance or things that we voted on before, this is one of those that has a lot of checks and balances to ensure that the public understands that not only do we care about this issue because it is saving lives, but fiscally responsible programs and that we are going to make sure that that occurs. Now, I know that the Citizens Advisory Committee and that the mayor, this supports the effort of the mayor having the responsibility and review to, under the leadership of the gangs are there in the mayor's office, the importance of having someone who is responsible. I will never forget, and I say this often, when the chief of police sat at this table and said to us, that he was embarrassed, that he had not had the relationship or knew the person who was responsible for gang intervention in the city. And that was a tragedy. And to be able to have it within the mayor's office and responsible was very, very important. So for me, this is a way in which we will have checks and balances to ensure appropriate expenditure of these funds. But also, my son, everyone's children around here, remember, I was deeply touched by Mr. Cardenas's remarks several months ago when we talked about the criteria and his own family's feeling about being able to walk safely in their neighborhoods. Let's make this neighborhood and this city more safe. Let's also make sure that the funds are spent appropriately and let's save lives in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. I know Ms. Perry is here in about one minute, so should be expecting a vote very soon on this. But I want to thank you and the mothers throughout the city who stepped up on this issue. We don't have to go over, I think, it's always the most powerful moment for me when I hear my colleagues speak about those individual stories that we all mostly don't talk about, the very private moments that we share with parents, with cousins, with sisters, with brothers, with sons, of people who have been shot and killed in this city. They're our own neighbors. They live blocks away from us. They surround us every day, the meals that we bring to them, the funerals we help pay for, the funerals we go to. There is no Angelino that can't be moved by this issue. But it's not enough just to feel strongly about this. We have to act smartly about it. And that's what I want to thank you, Ms. Hahn, because you not only feel so deeply about this, but you are smart about what we've put here together. And there's a million reasons we can say, "Let's not do this." I've been a part of running four ballot measures in my time here. Prop H to keep Hollywood in LA, the original Prop H. Prop O for the Clean Water Act. Prop R for ethics reform and term limits reform. And then Prop H, the housing bond. Three out of four of those went through and the last one got a 63% vote. But I want to focus on that last one, Prop H, which people said, "You shouldn't do it. It's not going to go." We built a coalition around housing that cannot be turned back because of that. This one is going to go through. We are going to get a victory out of this, like the first three. But for all the people who would say, "Well, we can tweak this more," we have shown as a council and as a city with this mayor, our ability to do this right. We are working hand-in-hand consolidating programs in one place, making sure that we have a proper balance of power so that it isn't just about fiefdoms, it is about progress and stopping death. And we also have proven outcome-oriented programs. I've been going by and in my own district, at the Park After Dark, which was the template for kind of summer nightlights and summer nightlights now, which is all over the city. It is amazing to see those kids. I was with somebody this morning who was walking with me in the park, my exercise friend, who said, "These kids came up to me yesterday and started talking about how cool their rec center is and it's a place to go and they feel safe." It's the sort of thing that we've seen Carla Sanger do, that we have volunteers throughout our community that have spent time, that transform lives early on before it is too late. And lastly, we also have a focus from law enforcement that is smarter than it's ever been. When I saw law enforcement acting in where Mr. Reyes and myself and Mr. Weezer have our districts in northeast Los Angeles to go after the Avenue's gang with federal law enforcement officials, we finally saw the same thing that brought down the mafia and that brought down organized crime before that being used right here where we see the gangs who are taking these kids away. I think we have not only put the protections in here, but the time is now. We're going to have a record turnout this fall. People are going to be inspired for all sorts of hope and all sorts of change in this country and they are going to see themselves reflected in government in a way that they never have before. And when that young person who might be 18-years-old, trying to figure out what's going on with his or her life, or the first person voting for a president, can see that reflected, they're also going to carry you in the waves to victory, Ms. Hahn. But it is not your victory, it is a victory for all of those mothers and families that have lost kids in the past. And all those lives will never be able to quantify, but we will have saved when this passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. You know, it's been six years as a council member, seven years. And I know for some of you, I sound like a broken record because I keep talking about our housing needs, the violence, the deaths that have occurred in my district and throughout the city. But this is an opportunity where those individuals who don't have to live with this on a day-to-day basis can hopefully appreciate that now you are getting hit with tagging, you're getting hit with graffiti. Now imagine with these resources, these youngsters can have a place in which they can display their art, they can display their skills. They no longer have to hit your garage door or your street signs or your walls along your pristine gardens and greenways. Because now there's a place for them to go throughout the city. You know, Tony talks about his kids, and I appreciate what he's saying, my 12-year-old son, my 14-year-old son, my 17-year-old son, we live in northeast LA. We live in areas where there's three or four gangs within a half-mile of our home. And we talk about, my wife and I, do they have their IDs on them? Do they have my business card on them? Because we don't know what's going to happen that day or that night when they decide to ride their bike. Now, this is a personal discussion that happens every day in my house. But for many, many moms and dads, they can't have the discussion anymore because their kid is already gone, their son and daughter is already gone. And we can make a difference with 10 cents a day, 10 cents a day. That's what we can do as a city. So the naysayers, the detractors, those who understand what we go through, give your sons, your grandsons, your grandchildren a chance. Because maybe it's not your kid, but it could be theirs. Give this city a chance. So we urge an I vote, a unanimous vote, as soon as Councilperson Perry gets here. But more importantly, think about the future of the city. This is an investment for the future. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Perry has arrived.
Thank you, seatmate. It's perfect timing for me to say a couple of quick things. I'm about to leave for a funeral in Oakwood where Melvin Hayward, a 59-year-old gentleman, passed away, diabetes and heart disease. His son, Melvin Jr., is one of the leaders of Venice 2000. This is a grassroots effort in Venice and the Oakwood area with historically LA Bridges and historically with the Latino communities, working African-Americans and Latinos into a harmony mode. I will never forget, two years ago, I got a phone call that Augustine Contreras, a kid who had just turned 17 in Venice High School, was gunned down in the parking lot. I rushed to the scene and hugged the mother of Augustine Contreras. I never want to see another kid killed anywhere in this great city. These intervention and prevention programs are as much value to me as they are areas that the mayor has put into his gang-zoned areas. If we don't do intervention and prevention, we will have suppression. We will spend a dollar for every penny we spend now on getting kids out of trouble. I don't mind as a devil's workshop, we know that. We know that we need after 2:00 in the afternoon until parents come home at night, opportunities for young people to grow, to educate themselves, to be involved. That intervention-prevention is more critical, frankly, in my opinion, than all the suppression strategies that just continue the problem. And this is what this is all about. And to dedicate this money, I want to dedicate it in memory of Augustine Contreras so it never happens again. I've had a young kid living with me named Adam. He was nine-years-old when he started. And when he went to the middle schools down the street, he already was in this gang-tagging business that started to happen. And he was pushed into Venice High School in a very dramatic way and the gangs were fighting among themselves. He was a white boy, so he didn't know where to go and where to belong. So he left and went out to the desert to finish his high school. That's what happens in a lot of these situations. But when you spend money on intervention and prevention, you're spending it the right way that gives kids opportunities and hope and takes them out of the gang mentality. And when Mr. Cardenas talked so passionately about his own children, I had to think of young Adam, a white boy who was caught in the middle of that insanity that is the pre-gang and the gang stuff that starts to develop. Nothing better than intervention and prevention, folks. A penny wise, dollar foolish, we know that insanity. And of course, we all should have a unanimous I vote on that. Thank you, Mr. President, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll call the question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Madam Clerk, please, is there any objection to calling the question? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. And forthwith, Ms. Clerk, our next items that we will reconsider. Forthwith, yes, reconsider.
The items to reconsider are items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 19... The items to reconsider are items 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 19, 20, 21, and 22.
And the item we just approved. Okay. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Thank you. Those items are now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on these items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Thank you very much. Any other items, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, there are motions for posting a referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Kardness requests to be excused on August 15, September 3 and 5 for city business. This meets policy.
Excuse is granted.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Do we have any announcements, colleagues, of business nature? If not, do we have any adjourning motions today? I believe we have an adjourning motion from Ms. Gruel. If I can ask everybody, please, in council chambers, to rise for our adjourning motions, please. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It is with great sadness that I adjourn in memory of Bayer John Welsh Jr., who passed away at the age of 77 on June 29, 2008, after a brief illness. He was born on June 23, 1931, in Eugene, Oregon, and was a graduate of USC and an officer in the U.S. Navy. He was the owner of the Welsh Company and sold school and office furniture for 42 years. He is the husband of a woman I've had the pleasure of knowing for a long time, who was an active Bruin, so they had a mixed family with USC and UCLA. They were married for 48 years. And so he is survived by his wife Lynn, his son Steve, and his granddaughters Emma and Kyra. In lieu of flowers, contributions can be made to Sierra Nevada Alliance, P.O. Box 7989, South Lake Tahoe, California, 96158, or to Gold Shield, which is the organization. I had the pleasure of working with Lynn over the years, P.O. Box 84-493, Los Angeles, California, 90073. He was an amazing husband. He was someone who came with Lynn to all of the events and participated and really was a true partner, and so I know our thoughts are with Lynn and her family during this really tough time. Thank you very much, Ms. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Do we have any other adjourning motions? Not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Roll next being session on Tuesday, that is, the 15th of July. We look forward to seeing everybody here in council chambers. Thank you again to our viewers, members of the public who took time out of their day to be here, and this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Have a great weekend.